Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting of Committee of the Whole to order for Monday, October 5th, 2020. First off, are there any disclosures of interest? Seeing none. First up, the approval of the agenda. Need a mover and a seconder, or are there any changes? Counselor Sharp and Counselor Vane. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Vane, resolved that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting of October 5th, 2020 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and a seconder for the Advisory and Board Minutes to be received. Counselor Vane, Counselor Ritchie. Any questions on these before I read the resolution? Seeing none, moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolved that the following Advisory and Board Minutes be received. Grinsby Economic Development Minutes of February 19th, 2020, and September 30th, 2020. Grinsby Green Advisory Committee Minutes of February 26th, 2020. Grinsby Museum Minutes of March 4th, 2020. Grinsby Public Library Board Minutes of April 8th, May 13th, and June 10th, 2020. Committee of Adjustment Minutes of August 25th, 2020. All in favor? That's carried. Now we move to our delegation. Tony Quirk of the Grinsby, or 62 Grinsby Phantom Air Cadet Squadron. Welcome, Tony.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear and see me?
I can.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. So thank you for having us here today with me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Is, is our SSC Chair Dave Leonard, who is also our past commanding officer for the squadron. And just wanted to say thank you very much for having us here today. I know you have a very busy agenda, so I will try to go through this quickly. But if you can't hear me, or if you need questions, we can either leave them to the end, or have our work for you, Mr. Mayor. So the reason why I'm supposed to be controlling Devon's computer here, and I just want to make sure I'm advancing properly. There we go. Sorry, I have to touch the right part of the screen here. So I would just like to explain what we're asking for, and then I will explain what it is that, and why we're asking for it. The squadron has proposed a private bill in the Legislative Assembly of Ontario that would allow, if, if passed, the ability for the town of Grinsby to exempt our property from municipal taxes, local, regional, and provincial education taxes. The only thing we would not be able to do under statute is any specific development or local improvement area taxes. But that doesn't apply to our property. Just to provide a bit of background with respect to the corporation that is 62 Grinsby Phantom Squadron Sponsoring Committee. We are a non-share capital not-for-profit registered charity. Each squadron and cadet corps across Canada has a sponsoring committee of some sort, usually a parent group that is there to help raise funds and provide supports for the local squadron. In our case, we are an incorporated entity with charitable status as an affiliate of the Air Cadet League of Canada. We are, I use this example as, as similar but not exact. We're like a parent, parent-teacher association for a school. The actual operations of the squadron are handled through the Department of National Defense. And we provide the additional supports that are required to make sure that the squadron can operate in logistics that go with it. Just a little bit of background on the property purchase. For those of you who haven't had a chance to see the property or haven't driven by it, it's the properties known as 101, 103, and 105 Mountain Road in Grinsby, just at the top of the mountain, across from Ridge Road West. There's the old Ukrainian church and the hall, community hall, and there is the vacant lot of property that butts the escarpment brow. When we, we entered into the purchase agreement with the Ukrainian diocese, the agreement was that title would not transfer until the mortgage was paid off or satisfied. And so I use the example of if you went and bought a house and you did all the work with the lawyer in the morning, and you transferred funds in the afternoon, title would be changed and you would get the keys in the, at the end of the day. In our situation, we entered into purchase agreement, we provided the deposit, we started paying the mortgage eight years ago, and titled it officially transfer and land transfer tax paid until this past August. And there was a couple of reasons for that, just for, for how we were operating and to give the diocese a little bit added protection in case, in case we weren't able to satisfy the mortgage. Since our purchase in May 1st, 2012, the squadron has been responsible for all costs associated with the property. We have paid the utilities, all the improvements, all the maintenance through a combination of fundraising and donations from the community. And we've paid the property tax that has been payable since day one on the vacant lot. As part of our due diligence going forward, as we were going to transfer title at the end of the cadet year, which was August 31st, we have been working with Steve Greninger at the town and Todd Harrison at the region about our charitable status and to make sure that we would still meet the threshold and requirements for the rent abate, the property tax abatement programs through the region. And as a result of our inquiries into MPAC and what would be involved, MPAC said, not only do you not qualify as a charitable organization because of your use, they directed the town to reclassify based on our current use as a cadet training facility and backdated to January 1st, 2020. That resulted in two additional tax bills coming in for 103 and 105 Mountain Road totaling just about $10,000 in taxes. The other issue that arranges from a quirk in the system with respect to church properties is once church properties are deemed to be not exempt, they are automatically classed as residential for MPAC purposes, which again gets us into the catch 22 as it disqualifies us from any regional exemptions anyway, where the region might consider giving us an exemption based on charitable status and arguments we can make about other programs that are available for youth. Because we're not zoned commercial, we don't get to qualify for that anyway. Under the Ontario Assessment Act, there are specific exemptions that are provided, and the act is very clear. It's, it's not open to interpretation. You have to be a named exemption to qualify for MPAC to say you are exempt. And specifically charitable organizations that provide to the poor. Think GBF, Bible Missions and those sort of things. The Royal Canadian Legion is specifically exempted by name. The Navy League of Canada is exempted by name. And I believe that the reason for that and not the Army Cadets and the Air Cadets is because at the time, the Navy League was the only group that had accessible properties that were being used. Land used by veterans for clubs, athletics, and memorial homes is also exempt. And just to add to where we're at, the Boy Scouts and Girl Guides are exempt as well for any properties they own. And they own properties like camps and, and places that people go for youth programming. So where does that leave us? Luckily, this isn't the first time this has happened. We had a situation in Niagara in 2016 where the Boys and Girls Clubs of Niagara found themselves unable to satisfy their property tax bills. They had a building and property that was not, that was accessible for tax purposes. They had a situation where they were accumulating massive arrears. The city didn't want to put them up for tax auction or anything like that because of the work they did. So they entered into a private bill, which allows the city to exempt that particular property, provided that they meet the criteria, they are still catering to the needs of youth. The law was passed in 2016, and the taxes were exempt by the city of Niagara Falls through bylaw in November of 2016. And that exemption was backdated all the way to 2011 to allow for the clearing of previous owed taxes, interest, and penalties. So our situation is not unlike the Boys and Girls Club. We are not a named exemption under the act, although that would be our next step if, if we had to. We are unique in that no other squadron has assessed lands in Ontario. We have other squadrons that have their own facility, but they tend to be located on municipal airports that are exempt. And MPAC hasn't got in there to talk about the uses of them, or their parading in schools or other public entities or community centers, or the armories, which are also exempt. Thank you. We have a situation where for the last eight, well, for the last century, the town of Grinsby has not been getting any tax revenues when it's been assessed as a church. So we're not asking the town to forego money that they were using or expecting anyway. And ultimately, the bill that we're asking you to endorse tonight will still give Town Council the final approval and say, as the bylaw timing. The bylaw cannot be more than 10 years and has to be up for renewal. So if the town passes a bylaw and, under the act that passes, if, if the use changes, the cadet squadron folds, you know, we start using it for other purposes. Ultimately, the Town Council can either withdraw their bylaw, or there's usually wording in the bylaw that gives them the ability to put, make taxes accessible again. So as long as we're meeting our obligations and criteria as set out by the bylaw that the town of Grinsby passes, we would continue to enjoy that tax exemption and then 10 years hence, we would have to come back and get it renewed anyway and, and, and say that we're doing that. So I apologize for going through that very quickly. I know that my time was limited and I appreciate your indulgence. If you have any questions about what we're asking for or the program itself, Major Leonard would be happy to answer questions about the cadets, and I would be happy to answer any questions through you, Mr. Mayor, of any members of council about what it is we're looking to do. And I think I have to hand my screen back to Devon, or she's going to do that for me.
Thank you for your presentation, Tony. Full of information and thank you for the speed you presented it. Questions from council? Counselor Bothwell. Oh, sorry, Counselor Dunstall, I think, is on the top. Then Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you. Your worship through you to Mr. Quirk. Curious, it's, it's a large facility and the squadron is using it. Have you any future plans concerning sharing it with other, let's say, service clubs or other charitable organizations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Dunstall, I know that Dave can speak more to the actual things that have happened in the past. We can tell you right now, we are looking to work and partner with the Army Cadets who find themselves without a home initially. But in the past, we have worked with, we've provided space to the Lions Club. We have made the hall available to not-for-profits and other charities like McNally House, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, to hold fundraising events and to work with them to, to continue the use as, as a community hall as best we can. That was kind of part of the unwritten agreement with the, the church when they offered it to us at such a great price, is that we would make that happen. One of the things that we're treading very carefully with, and I say this in public as, with caution is that if we start leasing the facility and we become landlords, then MPAC steps in and says you're a commercial venture. So we have to be very cautious and cognizant of the fact that we try to keep it to not-for-profits and other charitable organizations that if they were using it in their own regard, that they wouldn't trigger sort of that tax issue. And we also, there's a small percentage income of what our overall fundraising efforts are. It's not a majority of what we try to do. But we do do that to try to mitigate our operating cost, and we do it at a reduced rate or a no fee for the appropriate charity and organization that we work with.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I just let Major Leonard step in for a second.
Mr. Mayor, so there are other organizations that we have helped in the past. There have been other air cadet units throughout Niagara and Niagara Lakes, St. Catherine's, Thorold, they've all come out. We used our facility for the air cadet squadrons, the 1626 Army Cadets. They are now temporarily in our home. We signed a memorandum of understanding with them last week. And as of this Wednesday night, they find themselves in our facility until August of 2021, at which point we review the, the organization. We've talked with the Boy Scouts, First North. One of the things we've, we've asked them is whether or not they could put us on their insurance as an additional insured, which would allow us to then offer our facilities up for them. And they've asked a few times, but that's the one sticking point with us is the, the insurance requirements. There have been other organizations, and I don't know if you've heard of an organization called Rubicon Canada. They're a disaster relief organization made up of veterans and first responders. They're new to Canada, and they're just developing their Niagara arm. They wanted to start utilizing our facility as of the end of September in order to train volunteers for disaster relief specifically in the Niagara region. Unfortunately, they couldn't get their ducks in a row in order to be able to gear up for that at the end of September. We're looking forward to a partnership with them going forward. So yes, our, our goal first and foremost in our mission statement is to support the cadets of 62 Grinsby Phantom Squadron, any other youth organization, and then any other community organization that has the need to use the facility. There may be a cleaning deposit or something like that that we need to go through in order to pay for the heat and the hydro and stuff like that. But the use of the facility is designated for the use, it's a community center. That's really what we want it to be. We want it to be a community center for all of West Niagara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan and Tony for the presentation and giving us a bit of a background on the, the great work that the squadron does in the community. And I know it's a very, very worthwhile cause. So my questions are not at all negative, I hope. I understand there's three properties, 101, 102, and 103. 101 being the vacant parcel and then the Ukrainian church and the community center. The 101, what I understand was you guys have been paying the $2,500 a year or whatever for assessed as vacant residential land. And MPAC is not willing to change that designation, or it isn't changing that designation. And you're requesting that all three parcels be forgiven retroactively to 2012, meaning that not only are we forgiving the, the amount that you have from 2020 that you've estimated, but also roughly 15,000 of school board, regional tax, and town tax on the vacant parcel going back to 2012 and for future forgiveness on that vacant parcel as well. I just have a bit of a concern about going back retroactively to 2012 to forgive taxes that have already been utilized by the various levels of government and somehow getting a refund on those. Maybe you can help me understand that? Because I, I don't understand how that works if we retroactively forgive taxes on that vacant parcel. And then the second question is, you mentioned that you've had this bylaw go be reviewed or vetted by the Minister of Finance. I just wondered how that discussion is going. And that no other squadron has assessed lands. So this is unique, and I just want to make sure that we get this bylaw right in the sense that there's very few that are handled this way. And I'm just, and I'm a little uncomfortable with that retroactivity going back to 2012 when you were incorporated in 2013, as well as those monies already kind of having been expended and used. Who gets the money back, or how does that work?
So, thank you, Counselor. Great questions. So I'm going to, I'm going to break it down to the three parts that you said, and I'll address the retroactively first. So let me be very clear. Our hope and goal is that we get the exemption for 103, 105. For the last eight years, we have fundraised and absorbed the $2,500 each year for 101, the vacant land, because we didn't know we had any other choice in that matter. We looked at exemptions for the, we've looked at exemptions for the Ontario Conservation Land Tax Program, and we've looked at other ways to sort of mitigate that. We haven't been successful. So first and foremost, the, the private bill that we pass, that we're going to ask the legislature to pass will allow the town of Grinsby to exempt any of the properties individually and allow them to exempt any of the properties retroactively. Our goal is to get 103 and 105 exempted from a go-forward basis, and hopefully 101 on a go-forward basis as well. Because if you're going to exempt all of them, why not 101 as well? The retroactivity to 2012, from when we first started paying taxes on the vacant land, that's a nice-to-have versus a need-to-have. We would obviously love for the town of Grinsby to say, yes, we collected $15,000 in taxes for the last eight years. 75% of that went to upper levels of government. If we pass this retroactively, that's money that we can get back from the region and the, the province through adjustments to the submissions this year. Plus, it's really only going to cost the town about $4,000, because that's what your share of it was over a lot of time. That is definitely the nice-to-have versus the need-to-have. And at that point, the endorsement of the bill tonight, you still have to pass the bylaw, and you can choose as a council, if you, if the bill allows you to, you can exempt all three properties, you can exempt one of the properties, you can exempt it retroactively for some of the properties or not the other properties. Our ask is for all three properties retroactively, because that's obviously to our best interest. We will take whatever generosity graphs Grinsby Council at the time. Apologize, Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Bothwell. The second question had to do with the
Ministry of Finance.
Ministry of Finance reviewing it. So the private bill is submitted through the Clerk's Office and through the Legislative Council's Office. Legislative Council Office helps draft it to make sure that we, we don't do anything untoward in terms of the, the legislation. We make sure the wording is correct. That's the lawyers get their hand on it. They subsequently send it to the Ministry of Finance, because it has financial implications for them to make comment back to when the bill goes in front of the Committee for Private Bills and Regulations. Finance staff would then make comment on the, their thought process on it. What we have heard from the Legislative Council's Office, not directly from finance staff, is that they're reviewing it. They like the fact that we provided the precedent with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Niagara. There is a question as to whether this should be included in the Assessment Act as a whole and not necessarily a private bill to address some of these issues. But that's a separate conversation. But so far, we've had very positive feedback on the structure of the bill and no negative connotations. Because ultimately, the decision to pass the exemption still falls back into the town of Grinsby's hands. So through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Bothwell, does that answer your questions?
Yeah, and you said there's no other squadron that has any, has assessed lands that are similar to the situation. Is that correct?
Yeah, so in our research, and we worked with the Ontario Provincial Committee of the Air Cadet League of Canada, we have discovered that there is one other squadron that has assessable land. And they are, but that is being paid for by the donor or a squadron donors is covering that, and it's minimal in terms of the amount that's involved.
Okay.
And could you?
Was it Sarnia?
Sarnia, sorry.
Thank you. And just one other quick question you mentioned, because the Ukrainian church has some significant heritage features and historical significance to the town. As you guys have now taken it over, are we seeing that you're going to be continuing to keep it up and looking at maintaining that, those, those heritage components of that church?
Absolutely. Counselor, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bothwell. As you, you may or may not know, I'm a big fan of heritage. I had my building designated personally, this building specifically. Again, although it's not spelled out in our agreement, there is an unwritten obligation to the diocese that we would maintain it as much as possible and keep the heritage features going. The nice thing about future designation is the ability to get additional grants for facade improvements and, and retroactive, sorry, renovations that are allowed to maintain its style and shape. So we have been very cognizant of the historical significance of it. When you had asked that question previously, Counselor, I did not get an answer to say whether it's officially designated yet. I don't think it is. I think it's on our heritage watch list, which would mean, obviously, if we tried to do anything that required building permits or massive changes, the town would be notified and given the opportunity to designate it officially, if it hasn't been already. But we love the facility. We love the look and feel of it. I can't speak to, to everyone else on the committee, but we have, we see that as such a, like, the internal of it is great acoustics for our bands, for doing concerts, for doing our speaking contests that we host for Niagara and beyond every year. It's just such a great facility as it stands. We, we've already done significant improvements in the basement of it that we did when we first took over the property. So it's my hope, and I, Major Leonard can speak to it, our goal is to keep that part as, as intact as possible.
Thank you.
Sorry, if I can add to that, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Bothwell. You know, this church is one of two in this motif in Canada. The other one's in Manitoba. And it, it, it really is on us that we recognize the heritage as well as the historical significance of this facility. Because of the acoustics and whatnot, it, it really does lend itself for musical, for, as you say, public speaking, where we hosted the Niagara Air Group Public Speaking Contest every year for the last five years. We've hosted Win 10, which is a group of about 18 squadrons that come in and, and do their public speaking in our facility. It really does allow us to do different things with the pews and everything else like that, where we can host 200 to 300 people in the way it currently is. And the facade outside is one that, you know, we really, really are trying our hardest to keep up with. But the interior is phenomenal. The, the tapestries and everything else that are, that's inside the church itself is just absolutely phenomenal. And we want to try and keep it as much as we possibly can to include these features.
Absolutely. And it makes it easy to tell people where we are.
Thank you. I'm just gonna, my last statement, sorry, Mayor, is that the draft resolution for the town of Grinsby Council to support, the only change I would have to the wording is because we have the discretion to choose whether we wish to, to exempt all properties or not. The wording says, "The town of Grinsby, upon the private bill receiving royal assent, shall pass a bylaw as contemplated in this bill for the purpose of exempting the specified properties known as 101, 103, and 105." So I think that wording of "shall pass" for all three properties is, is going to not give us that choice. So I think it should say "may pass" instead of "shall", so that we have that option of choosing whether we wish to continue to exempt 101. It's, so I'm just a little uncomfortable, and also the retroactivity to 2012. So I just have a little bit of concern about the wording of the draft resolution, so that we still have that option to, to discuss that.
Thank you. Counselors, through, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Counselor, you can't blame a guy for trying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tony. Where'd you go? There you are. Thank you, Tony, for your presentation. I commend you for your dedication to the air cadets. I was one myself. My brother was one. My nephews are in the air cadets. I certainly have a lot of time and support for the air cadets. So whatever questions I ask, and like Counselor Bothwell, I don't want them to sound negative. It's really, I'm, I'm on a question-answer mission here. Being that the air cadets is already a nonprofit charitable organization, would that not lend a lot of weight to your application for this particular exemption with the, with the provincial government?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Frake. Yes, the, the charitable status does lend itself to some credibility. The problem is the wording in the Assessment Act is charitable. The problem is, the wording in the Assessment Act is, uh, charitable, uh, charitable organizations that cater to the impoverished, right? The, the wording is such that, so you can't just be a charitable organization and not have that sort of caveat to, uh, allow you to continue. And that was the sort of request and information that we reached out to MPAC initially for, to sort of get that prejudgment in place. Um, and, or the pre-ruling, if you will, before we took full ownership of it. Um, so the, the charitable status just in and of itself doesn't necessarily lend itself to, uh, uh, to being tax-exempt. However, I, what we're saying with the other exemptions that are existing within the Assessment Act, charitable status, uh, military and veterans groups, um, children's, or, or youth groups and youth organizations that are catered to, plus the precedent for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Niagara, we feel that we have a very good chance of passing this bill, um, once, uh, once we go through, uh, through this process. And, and maybe, sorry, just to answer that, so one of the steps in the process is, when we submit the bill to the legislature, one of the things I look for is that motion of endorsement from the local municipality. Uh, and that's what, that's, nothing else for tonight, that's what we're looking for, is that motion to endorse, uh, endorse the, uh, the bill in this, uh, entirely.
Okay, this one, yeah, thank you, clarified that very well. Uh, so, uh, should we not approve this tonight? Does that hinder your, or, or put a, put a wet blanket on your application towards, uh, to the government finance?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, to, uh, to the counselor. So, the requirement to have the municipal, uh, support for it is based on the fact that we are giving, or the bill would allow the municipality a, a, as an authority to affect provincial statute, i.e. the Assessment Act. Um, if the municipality comes back and says, "We don't want it", then the Legislative Assembly is gonna say, "Well, okay, that's nice of you to wanna give it to the town of Grimsby, uh, but they don't want it, so we're not gonna waste our time on this." So that's kind of like the, the trigger point, right? We're asking for specific permission for the town to be able to do something that affects provincial statute, the idea being that through this motion that you agree that you think you should have this authority. And that's, that's kind of what it looks for. So without that, um, the, uh, without that motion of support, it kind of dies on the order table. We're not even gonna put it in front of the committee, because it doesn't check that box, uh, for the Legislative Clerk's office. Um, the, the outcome of that would be, our next step would be to lobby the provincial government to change the Assessment Act to include Air Cadet League as well as Navy League, right? So, um, uh, but that's a multi-year process, and in the meanwhile, taxes will be building up, and interest will be building up, and penalty will be building up. So this is the fastest, quickest way.
So we're kind of setting on new territory here.
Uh, new territory for the town, but again, because it's already been done through the Boys and Girls Club of Niagara, they kind of stepped forward and are the precedent that we're using to justify our, right? Again, a unique property, unique situation for a group that would, uh, for all other intents and purposes be, uh, um, if they were Boys and Girl Scouts, as opposed to Boys and Girl Scouts Clubs, they would already be exempt.
So, uh, following on from that, uh, I heard you mention a few times that this could also be used as a community center for a lot of other typical organizations. So, do you have, is your quest to have this exempt under the Boy, or the, under the Cadets' umbrella? Or are you looking for it as a, as a community hall? I mean, uh, I think, community hall, whole different flavor on the whole thing.
So, uh, through you, uh, to Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Frake. So, the auspices of the sixty-two Phantom Squadron, um, guidelines or, or letters patent that established us as a corporation, say, "Our goal is to provide, um, support and services and a place to parade for the Air Cadet, uh, for the Air Cadet Squadron." Our other aspects of this, because this was a previously a community center, um, and our sort of obligations to the church is to try to continue to be open to community groups as much as possible. We want to be partners, uh, with other organizations, other not-for-profits, other groups that sort of satisfy our similar-type goals. The private bill that is in front of you today basically says, "The bylaw shall say that if we meet these criteria, we get the exemption", and those criteria are spelled out, i.e. we are still supporting the Air Cadets, we're using it for facilities for similar-type purposes, um, and that we are using it as a charitable organization. You couldn't, we couldn't get you to do the exemption, and then we start, you know, running a flea market out of there, which we did all summer, but that's a whole other thing. Um, that's, uh, that wouldn't be kosher, uh, for the legislation, and it wouldn't be kosher for the, uh, for the, um, uh, the, the MPAC in, in the Legislative Assembly. And it wouldn't be, uh, appropriate for the town of Grimsby to exempt us if we were doing other things. So, uh, there is a fine line that we need to walk, but we've always made it available and open to other community groups to, to work with, and as a community center for not-for-profits and, uh, charitable organizations, Counselor. Like, what we're trying to do is not make it a, something that's competing with commercial ventures as, or, uh, private events and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, thank, I think you pretty much answered my question, thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If, if I can just add, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, to, uh, to Counselor Frake, um, over the last couple of years, uh, we haven't been able to do it, my, uh, to get together in order to finalize anything, but myself and Sarah Sweeney, over the years, have been talking together, saying that, uh, it would be great for us to be able to form some sort of partnership with the town of Grimsby in order to help and utilize the Parks and Rec. We haven't done that, just because both councils, um, Ms. Sweeney and myself have been so busy doing other things. Uh, I was the commanding officer of the Air Cadet Squadron, so my focus was keeping that organization running and everything. Now that I'm the chairperson of this committee, my focus has changed. My focus is about the community center, making sure that the facility, uh, is there for everybody, not just the cadets, but for everybody. So I imagine, um, I, I'm also the poppy chair for the Royal Canadian Legion. I know I have to talk to Ms. Sweeney, uh, in the next forty-eight hours on something totally different, but at the same time, I'm sure that's gonna come up in our conversations again, uh, tomorrow or the next day.
And, and if I can just add to that, sorry, one of the things that I don't think everyone is completely aware of is although you see those three properties along Mountain Road, it actually goes quite a far distance into the, uh, into the forest as well. There's five acres up there, so for day camps, um, for our field training exercises for the cadets. Like, there's some, some neat land up there, some neat naturalized land, uh, that the cadets can utilize, as well as for, um, uh, town of Grimsby day camps and a, a bunch of other things in the summer, especially when the cadets aren't meeting. So there's, there's some great opportunities for partnerships, Counselor, and through you, Mr. Mayor, I hope you do something that we explore.
So, well, yeah, what brings up another question, so what's to prevent, going forward, what's to prevent you and your successors from using that hall for, or the church for, for a more profitable situation with, where it's not charitable or nonprofit? I mean, uh, there has to be some guidelines and some, some, some stipulations built into that as well. I mean, how, how do you see that, uh, panning out?
So, a- absolutely, Counselor, through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Frakes, uh, spot on. The legislation, uh, again, sort of prescribes the requirements of the bylaw that as long as it meets these criteria, the exemption shall continue. And, and you would write that right in the bylaw, much like, uh, I provided the sample from what Niagara Falls did. Here's a criteria you have to meet every year to keep your, your exempt status. As soon as you don't meet these exemptions, uh, then you lose your status. And that's exactly for the, uh, for the, the municipal, municipalities' protection, as well as to sort of make sure we all stay above board. The, the critical component of that, Counselor, is that it's now a discussion between the town and the squadron, as opposed to getting MPAC involved. Once we pass this bylaw, we have to satisfy, uh, our use to your, uh, to your agreement, as opposed to through, uh, to MPAC's agreement.
I guess one final question, sorry, I, I meant to, I meant to be shorter than this. So if you, if this happens with you tonight, you go to the province, they say no, then what happens?
Well, there's a couple of things, uh, Counselor, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we would continue lobbying to try to get, uh, Air Cadet and Army Cadet, uh, from these exempts. Um, one of the issues that we have is this, the Air Cadet League is across Canada, and we're just one province, and we're only one or two squadrons that have this issue. Uh, one where it's actually affecting our finances directly, so that's first issue. Uh, secondly, if we have to find this ten-thousand dollars in a year in COVID, when our cadets aren't allowed to participate in fundraising, uh, when we have been so scrambling just to keep our head above water, uh, up until getting this bill, with not having the cadets available to do our tagging, to do our, uh, poppy sales that they participate, and we get a donation from the Legion in, uh, we weren't able to help out with the, uh, summer, uh, music series at, uh, Charles Gately Park, which was a big donation for our participation in that. All those things have gone by the wayside, so we're, we're starting the year out behind the eight ball by about fifty-thousand dollars to begin with. We've done everything we can do within COVID requirements and Department of National Defense guidelines to sort of mitigate that with our metal drive, our auto drive, our garage sales that we held this summer, but we're still short, you know, thirty-thousand dollars as we open the doors on October first. Uh, so, that is now, we're now short forty-thousand dollars. So, at the end of the day, we get to a situation where, uh, if we can't afford the facility, then we either have to forego paying taxes or forego, uh, providing the program to the, uh, to the kids, right? And that's, that's where this sort of comes into play. Uh, what the, every dollar that we raise goes to support the program, either by having a facility or program, uh, choices for the, the, the kids to participate.
Okay, I, I'll leave it at that, thank you. I mean, sure, I'm sure the other counselors have some questions for you as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Tony, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counselors, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell, you're up next.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and, uh, thank you for the presentation, Tony. And, uh, David, uh, thank you for the good work you've always done in the past. Uh, it's always been a real pleasure to see your, your group at the Remembrance Day Parade, uh, right at the, uh, at the Old Town Hall or the museum site, uh, yeah. And, uh, I, they look so professional, they, uh, your members do such a great job, so, uh, thank you for that too. Uh, question I have, and you kind of already answered one of my questions, uh, Tony, was with regards to the total amount, uh, taxes owing. And you mentioned about what the COVID has done to, uh, for your fundraising and that. So, uh, how mu- how much taxes are, is it, is the ten-thousand-dollar amount, is that the total amount, uh, Tony?
So, so Counselor, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Cadwell, um, so, uh, I can tell you that as of Friday, our twenty-five-hundred dollars for, um, Lot one oh one has all been paid up to date. We made all four payments on schedule, we've never missed a payment, uh, in the eight years we've owned it, that's, those are all up to date. Halfway through August, we received a, the tax bill that started this all going for one oh three and one oh five. Those, uh, those were due, uh, on August second as well, um, and penalties and interest accumulate, uh, as of whenever, I think it's September thirtieth, you, Council, waived those penalties, I don't know if that's continuing or not. But doubt, the outstanding taxes for us right now are purely the ones on one oh three and one oh five, which we were not, not prepared for, in that the retroactivity of them is what's causing us more grief than anything, Counselor. Um, if, uh, if we had to find a way in their normal times to manage it and absorb it, obviously we would, we've risen to every challenge, uh, on the financial side of this, uh, this facility and this effort, uh, through the work of the volunteers and through the cadets doing their fantastic fundraising. Um, but, uh, what was sort of the, the double kick in the teeth was not having any fundraising opportunities to speak of, uh, since March of this year. Uh, we missed our spring tagging, we won't be able to do our fall tagging, which is our number-one fundraiser, as well as the retroactivity, like, our fiscal year is, goes to August thirty-first. We thought we were ending the year in a pretty good shape in terms of, you know, not being completely and totally wiped out, only to sort of, you know, two weeks before year-end, get a ten-thousand-dollar tax bill that we weren't expecting. Uh, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. And so those taxes are now officially, uh, overdue as of, uh, October second.
All right, thank you, uh, is there any, uh, there's another round of, uh, COVID funding coming through the, uh, I believe it's the Minister of Municipal Affairs. And, uh, is there anything in place for non-for-profit organizations like yourself to, uh, to assist you people? Because I, I get it, I understand, uh, you do rely on a lot of your fundraising and rentals of your hall. I've been up to, I've been up to McNally's functions, quite a few functions up there, and, and they're all, they're, they're, they're a great time, their organizations do well. So, is there anything that might be, uh, I don't have a crystal ball, let's see what's coming out in, on the second round, but, uh, uh, are you hearing of any, anything at all?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Cadwell, um, we were invited to participate in, uh, some Trillium Fund, uh, COVID-based funding, and we put our name forward, uh, we're gonna start working towards a Trillium grants, uh, to sort of, there's a couple of criteria that we have to make sure we meet. One of the, uh, the only downside, uh, is to apply for Trillium funding or any of the other provincial funding, is that we need to, uh, get a level of certification on our financial statements that we have to, we're gonna be about fifteen-hundred dollars out of pocket to get a, uh, an audit of our financial statements. Normally, we send them to the Air Cadet League, the Air Cadet League signs off on them, and, uh, and we are, we're good to go. Um, but because it's through the government funding, we have to do another series of, uh, a level of, of audit. And that's fine, but again, on top of everything else, that's another fifteen-hundred dollars that we have to fundraise and find with, with all the others that we have going on. So, um, yeah, we, we are looking at it, we're, there is no stone unturned. There is, uh, hours and hours of this gentleman's time dumping into the, uh, metal bin, pulling out the good metal, uh, from the scrap metal. There is, uh, hundreds of hours of volunteers, uh, stacking bottles and cans. And Counselor, we appreciated your contribution, we won't tell the public how many you dropped off. Um, but, uh, I will tell you that those are the sort of things that, that almost pay for the taxes. No, we, we wanna say that, uh, we, we appreciate the support of the community, uh, for everything that we've done. And even when you talk about our tagging program, that is the community support, because they see the kids. And these kids, uh, are, they're, they're all good kids. It's a program that just inspires, uh, not just other kids, but our adults, when you see these kids participating that way. And, uh, I know, um, uh, seeing how my, my kids have participated in, as a farming farmer, a former Army Cadet, um, I'm only slightly offended that they went into Air Cadets rather than Army Cadets, but, but that's okay. Um, I, it's just such a great program, and anything we can do, it's, it's one of the few programs that, uh, for youth that is not subsidized by the taxpayer, municipal taxpayers in any way, shape, or form, right? Our, our recreation programs are subsidized to a certain extent. Um, day camps are subsidized to a certain extent, um, library programs. Uh, but, uh, the Air Cadets and the Army Cadets are all funded, uh, and only with a pittance through the Department of National Defense, but all the other costs have to be fundraised directly.
Yeah, and just one more, just another comment, and, uh, thank you for your answers there, Tony, uh. And just hearing the discussion, and it, it kind of hit home too, was, uh, the, uh, is it one oh five is the big building there, right? It's the rental hall? And then, uh, like, the, uh, the area from Ridge Road heading south, I believe it's to Kempero now, i- is a hub. You know, it's, uh, and, and, and that building, and that facility is part of the, the hub that's, that's up there. And then, and hearing the, uh, as David mentioned, maybe a possible partnership, uh, you know, with, because we're always looking for buildings too, for, for space, I'll call it that way. So, uh, yeah, I, uh, very interesting, good presentation, and, uh, it's got me thinking a lot, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Vane.
Um, thank you, Mr. Clerk and Major, for coming out this evening, I appreciate it. I appreciate your presentation, but my question to, uh, is to the Clerk first, before I ask you any questions. Um, Madam Clerk, could you tell me, I was under the impression that tonight's motion that we were considering was for, um, to endorse the motion to go forward to, or sorry, to endorse the idea to go forward to provincial council. Are we also considering waiving the past taxes, is that part of the current motion?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, uh, the current motion tonight is just to endorse a private bill.
Okay.
So, if you want me to read it, it states, and if there is.
No, it's just, people are talking about this, uh, this, uh, tax, past taxes, I didn't think it was part of it. That's all I wanted to know, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, um, to, uh, Mr. Clerk and the Major, um, I, I fully support the Air Cadets. I think they're an amazing, uh, organization, never had the opportunity myself, but I did have scouts and a few other things. So, um, my, uh, only concern, and I'm just saying this more generically to the rest of council, is that we've had a number of charities come before us, uh, seeking different things. I know we have other groups coming forward that have similar stories. I just finished a board meeting with another charity, uh, where they're also talking about the difficulties. I, the difficulties that we have, especially with COVID, is just killing charities. I'm just, um, concerned, um, based on past council decisions, um, how best to move forward with this. But, um, I just wanted to let you know, I do, you do have my support, I'm just kind of torn based on past decisions of this council. So, that's all for now, but I do support an amazing, amazing service, uh, amazing thing to get kids. I've seen a lot of good kids come out of the, uh, Air Cadets, the Army Cadets, and the Navy Cadets. It's, it really helps kids to become mature adults, so I really support it. But, uh, as I say, I just have concerns based on past decisions, but we'll leave it at that for now. Thank you again, both of you, for coming out.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Sharp. Counselor Sharp, I think you're still muted. Counselor Bautwa.
Thanks. Well, Counselor Sharp is finding his unmute. Um, thank you again. I just wanted to clarify uh, two more questions. Um, uh, Tony, what I understood was I thought the mortgage was running till 2022, and you guys just paid it off this August. So you kind of were able to advance it and pay it off early. Is that what I'm hearing? And then the second question is if we approve this um, uh, yeah, the the exemption, will that give you a break on the land transfer taxes that you've just paid on August 27th? Um, and the to the clerk, um, the reason that I talk about retroactive taxes 2012 is because the draft um, resolution that we've received in our package, the draft resolution for Town of Grimsby Council in support does have a paragraph at the end of it that that requests or says shall pass a bylaw with that retroactivity. So I just want to ensure the motion that we're hearing tonight is only to um, receive uh, or endorse the uh, bill and not to um, the second paragraph of that of that uh, draft resolution, please. Thank you.
So just for clarification, um, I I think I heard a friendly amendment to change it to may pass a bylaw?
Well, you you mentioned to Counselor Vane that the only wording was that we were endorsing it. And but the wording in this draft resolution talks about passing a bylaw.
Sorry, I I think I got my mute working again, but we aren't in the resolution yet. We're just, we have a delegation. We're just asking questions. So until it's moved, we can't amend it.
That's what I was thinking, uh, Counselor, that there shouldn't be, there should only be a receive the delegation, and then there should be a further motion to support, right?
So I I have a resolution coming later. I'm going to move it. I would accept that. But but we aren't in it right now, so I don't think we should discuss it until it's moved.
Um, can the clerk clarify that?
Yes, I mean, once we're finished the discussion and someone moves and seconds the motion, then we can proceed with it.
I'm sorry, moves the motion is only to receive the delegation. Is that correct?
At this time, yes.
Okay.
But I believe Counselor Sharp has a motion to move and second a motion, right?
Yeah, I have a resolution to, and the clerk has it. I emailed it to her earlier. But um, I'm just saying that we can't amend a re- a motion until we move the motion. So
Yes.
Thank you. I'm just looking at what's in the package. So um, thank you. I'll just go back to
Yeah, just what what we're doing right now is just receiving the uh, presentation, and then we'll uh, deal with any subsequent motions after.
Okay. Can I just get, um, I need to answer my question about the uh, if he gets a rebate on the land transfer tax if we pass this as well?
Oh, so Mr. uh, Mayor, through you to Counselor Bautwa, no, unfortunately, uh, land transfer taxes uh, are uh, not revatable, unfortunately. Um, we uh, we did everything we could to mitigate the impact of the land transfer taxes uh, by allocating the funds to the the three properties as much as we could to reduce it. Um, but at the end of the day, the province still wants their money, and they were going to get it. Uh, your other question you asked was, um, yeah, the original plan for the mortgage was until 2022. Uh, because of the Herculean efforts of not the the SSC that I sit on now, I've only been there a couple of years, but previous SSCs, they had been putting away uh, a certain amount each year, knowing that that mortgage is going to come due in 2022. And uh, the decision was made at the end of last year to try to accelerate accelerate the purchase uh, for two reasons. One, to stop paying the mortgage each year, which was uh, in our 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 budget, uh, and also um, to uh, to take full ownership of the property, because we did feel while that was hanging over us and title hadn't been transferred, there was potential uh, insurance issues. There was potential, uh, there was an inability to make application for heritage type uh, grants uh, and a few other things that were sort of limiting. Uh, in a normal year, our operations, what we wanted to accomplish with the building. I'll let Dave finish up. Um, Mr. Mayor, uh,
to Counselor Bautwa, the the other the other side of that was is by uh, by doing this early, uh, we actually saved over $18,000 in 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 mortgage payments, which made sense to us. We we had the money. Uh, but we were also approached by the Ukrainian Capital Digest of Ontario last year. Uh, that's when they came out and said, listen, we'd entertain you guys purchasing it early if you had the money. Uh, there's no need for us to go to the 10 years. If you have the money, let's move forward with it as soon as we can. Uh, and and so through everything, the saving of the $18,000, us having the money, it made sense to move forward with that purchase. Um, and uh, so we, back in February, the current uh, committee uh, passed a a resolution saying that we would move forward with the purchase uh, for year fiscal year end.
And just the wording of that is when we say move forward on the purchase is is sort of we close the purchase. The the purchase took place in in May 2012, and the closing of the purchase took place August 27th, 2020. So it's just a a long process. And Counselor, and just to avoid any confusion, uh, that that uh, resolution that I provided, the the package was my wish list resolution. It's not necessarily what would be passed tonight.
Thank you very much.
Hey, um, so sorry, my my computer's been slow. It freezes on me, and sometimes I can't unmute. So earlier, through the mayor, sorry, am I am I may I speak?
Yes, you may.
Yeah.
Counselor Sharp.
So um, my computer, like, I'm muted, and I'm trying to turn the mute off, and and it seems to freeze, and I can't do that. So sorry about that. So I had one comment to make. Um, when I was a teenager, a preteen, in uh, in Grimsby, I went to Air Cadets, and um, we didn't have cadets in Grimsby. They there was Army Cadets, but um, we had, uh, I went to Stony Creek, that 713 Squadron. It's like Jones Road. It's not far. But I did have to carpool. Um, you know, my parents found it difficult to drive, so we would share with another guy from Grimsby that also went to the cadets in Stony Creek. And um, then when we would do community things, it would usually be over at uh, Fiesta Mall or like in the in the Stony Creek Wynona area. And so the cadets in Grimsby, A, we have a place for our residents and our youth to go and participate in in this program. And B, the charity and the volunteer work from the cadets is expended in the Town of Grimsby. And I see the cadets out doing things at Remembrance Day and doing things um, in the community on on New Year's Eve. Um, there there's a a bunch of different things that the cadets do, and there's probably more that they could do. So um, I think that it's valuable to have them here. And and if we could support them, I think that that's a valuable thing for us. So thanks, Tony, for your presentation.
Thank thank you, uh, Counselor, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sharp. I'd just like to add, um, the the current squadron and the strength of the current squadron is doing no small part to the efforts of this man beside me uh, as commanding officer. He's he built that squadron up. Um, we have 100 cadets on parade, and we do draw them uh, the because of our facility and our consistent location um, and the ability to offer multiple uh, programs on multiple nights of the week because we have our own facility. Uh, we uh, we have, we draw cadets back from Stony Creek now. We have uh, members that come from uh, 50 Road and beyond, and we have people coming from Smithville uh, and Ambienville, and even St. Catherine's in Burlington for a couple because of our band. Um, there's not too many pipe and drum bands and full military bands out there where the kids are learning uh, instruments like the bagpipes for free. Uh, and that's these, and I mean, we don't need more bagpipers, I'll tell you that much. Uh, but we we definitely have a great music program. And when you look at the schools that are, you know, uh, closing down music programs or or not offering the full range of music programs, when you look at the uh, the skill set for like the sports competition we do and the drill competition, the discipline, like you, you know, Captain Sharp, it is a program that just uh, brings out the best in all our youth.
Yeah, it's true.
It's like operating a small school with that many kids.
Yeah, and um, it gives us another resource to lean on for for our own recreation programs, like in the cadets offer a service that if we were to offer would cost us more than the tax exemption. So um, that's like the question and comment I had.
There's definitely value for money, Counselor. I will tell you that much.
Thanks, Tony. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Counselor.
Well, seeing no further questions or comments, uh, thank you, uh, Tony and David for your presentation, and uh, have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right, so Counselor Sharp's resolution. All right, so Counselor Sharp, uh, who is the seconder for your resolution? Can I read it?
I'll second that motion. Can you?
We'd have to receive the report first.
That's what I thought, but. Okay. So apparently, we're merging uh, on direction of the clerk. We're merging the receiving of the report and uh, Counselor Sharp's resolution. How do you want that worded? I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Sharp, seconded by Counselor Vane, resulted in the delegation from Tony Quirk, 62 Phantom Air Cadet Squadron be received. And whereas the 62 Grimsby Phantom Squadron Sponsoring Committee, the SSC is a not-for-profit corporation under the Corporations Act and a registered charitable organization with the Canada Revenue Agency under the Income Tax Act, Canada. And whereas the SSC purchased the former Ukrainian church and Mountain Ridge Community Center formerly known as St. Mary's Hall on May 1st, 2012. And whereas the SSC has been the sole occupant of the properties for the purposes of hosting the training of the 62 Grimsby Phantom Royal Canadian Air Cadet Squadron. And whereas the facility has been deemed tax exempt up to January 1st, 2020, when the municipality Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, MPAC, made a ruling that the property was no longer tax exempt. And whereas the SSC has introduced a private bill entitled an act respecting 62 Grimsby Phantom Squadron Sponsoring Committee, uh, the bill modeled on the Boys and Girls Clubs of Niagara Act, which is tax relief, 2016 Act, which will allow the Town of Grimsby to pass a bylaw deeming the properties known as 101, 103, and 105 Mountain Road, Grimsby, Ontario, be taxed exempt retroactively to 2012. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Grimsby endorsed the private bill entitled an act respecting 62 Grimsby Phantom Squadron Sponsoring Committee, and the Town of Grimsby upon the private bill receiving royal assent shall pass a bylaw as contemplated by the bill for the purposes of exempting the specific properties known as 101, 103, and 105 Mountain Road, Grimsby, Ontario, from taxation for municipal purposes other than the local improvement rates beginning January 1st, 2021, and canceling the taxes for municipal purposes other than local improvement rates, including interest and penalties on the specific properties for the periods of from 2012 through 2020. Uh, comments and or questions, Counselor Bautwa?
Uh, this is where I would like to do, uh, Mayor Jordan, a friendly amendment. I don't believe we should um, that the language fell past a bylaw. Um, I think we have the latitude to determine whether we want to retroactively forgive all the way to 2012, so I think in May.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we have, uh, shall be changed to May. And uh, just a question, was it 2012 or 2013 when they entered into the agreement? I just I've heard both numbers out there, so.
They became a nonprofit corporation mayor in 2013. I think they purchased the property, I understood, in 2012, but didn't become incorporated in 2013. So there's some question there as well, which we can clarify once we, if we get to the bylaw stage.
All right. And and I I would myself would quite be quite happy to change the wording for the periods uh, from 2012 just to to the uh, period of uh, 2020. Uh, I don't know how anyone else feels about that, but uh, so Counselor Cadwell, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. As you were reading the resolution, um, MPAC obviously changed the to uh, not allow them to have a tax exemption. And that was just I'm just trying to understand some history here, too, uh, Mayor Jordan, that that was the Ukrainian church people. Because of the church, the three properties were not charged any taxes in the past, which I'm sure that's the way that's the way it was.
Yeah, I I'm not sure about about tax history back before 2012, but uh, uh, certainly, the um, vacant land was has been charged from 2012. Uh, and that, so I think that the church was probably paying for that vacant land. I would guess. I don't have the exact answer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. My only other question would be, um, has staff had the opportunity to uh, chime in, meaning our our treasurer, uh, Mr. Grandinger, to give any comments of uh, just from the financial side of it? I I would like to hear from staff. Uh, this is my own personal, personal liking before I I I I make a decision.
Yeah, Stephen's here, and I I'm sure he'll be happy to uh, speak on it. Stephen?
Thanks, man. Um, so uh, with regard to the exemption, um, yes, I I think um, I think would be great if council, uh, sorry, not the exemption, but the endorsement for the the petition, I think would be great uh, if council endorsed that. Um, that would help um, alleviate or um, the taxes that the Phantom Squadron has to pay. I think that would be a great first step uh, in helping resolve and resolve the tax issue. So I um, I would support, or I would recommend that council uh, endorse the petition, support the petition to the province.
Thank you, Stephen. Uh, Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, uh, I think it's great that we uh, we should be endorsing this to go to the province. And then if it gets royal assent, then when it comes back, we can ask for a staff report then and in regards to uh, you know, implications, so forth. So I think there's still time to do all of this. I think that we need to support this to see if the government will give it royal assent first, and just take one step at a time. I think we're uh, really getting uh, really far ahead of ourselves right now. Um, and and like I said, so I'm I'll be supporting this resolution. As it says, we may uh, do a bylaw. It will uh, allow us time. And if it gets royal assent, then we can ask for staff for a report on the implications and whether they would support it and so forth. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Ritchie. Uh, seeing no further uh, questions or comments, I will read the resolution again. Moved by Counselor Sharp, seconded by Counselor Vane, uh, resolved that the delegation from Tony Quirk, 62 Grimsby Phantom Air Cadet Squadron be received. And whereas the 62 Grimsby Phantom Squadron Sponsoring Committee, the SSC is a not-for-profit corporation under the Corporations Act and a registered charitable organization with the Canada Revenue Agency under the Income Tax Act, Canada. And whereas the SCC purchased the former Ukrainian church and Mountain Ridge Community Center formerly known as St. Mary's Hall on May 1st, 2012. And whereas the SSC has been the sole occupant of the properties for the purposes of hosting the training of the 62 Grimsby Phantom Royal Canadian Air Cadet Squadron. And whereas the facility has been deemed tax exempt up to January 1st, 2020, when the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, MPAC, made a ruling that the property was no longer tax exempt. And whereas the SSC has introduced the private bill entitled an act respecting 62 Grimsby Phantom Squadron Sponsoring Committee modeled on the Boys and Girls Clubs of Niagara Act, 2016 Act, which allowed the Town of Grimsby to pass a bylaw deeming the properties known as 101, 103, and 105 Mountain Road, Grimsby, Ontario, to be tax exempt retroactively to 2012. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Grimsby endorsed the private bill entitled an act respecting 62 Grimsby Phantom Squadron Sponsoring Committee, and the Town of Grimsby upon the private bill receiving royal assent may pass a bylaw as contemplated in the bill for the purposes of exempting the specified properties known as 101, 103, and 105 Mountain Road, Grimsby, Ontario, from taxation for municipal purposes other than local improvement rates beginning January 1st, 2021, and canceling the taxes for municipal purposes other than local improvement rates, including interest and penalties on the specific specified properties for the periods from 2012 through 2020. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frank?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell?
Yes, sorry.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes, so that is carried. Up next, we have the consent agenda. Need a mover and secondar? Counselor Dunstall and Counselor Ritchie?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a point of clarification?
Yes, Counselor Vane?
I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Counselor Ritchie brought this up before that, and it's just a matter, a technical matter, that's all, that the clerk was going to do the calling of the recorded votes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, no, I just asked you because I
Yeah, I think, I think I do remember that. It's just with everything else going on, it was just, just an oversight.
Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell?
Can we just lift report PA twenty twenty-one, the extension of draft plan approval, Eight Lake Street, from consent?
Yes, that'll be noted. Counselor Vardy?
Yes, I wonder if we could lift item six point three A on the public works consent, please?
Yep, that's done. All right, moved by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that the committee of the whole hereby approves the following items and the various consent items be given effect on the recommendation as contained therein. Report FIN twenty dash fifteen, the two thousand and nineteen Grinsby Museum report, report DPW twenty dash thirty-seven, and report DPW twenty dash thirty-eight. On favor? That's carried. And so we have report. So the lifted report? Okay, all right. The lifted reports will just follow in order of the rest of our agenda then. We have report seven point one A. Report TC twenty dash zero five Code of Conduct for council and local boards of town of Grinsby. So Charles Harnick will be joining us.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Charles.
And good evening to council members. I have provided council with a draft code of conduct that has been before you several times without any real discussion. At the last council meeting of a week or two ago, Counselor Bothwell suggested an amendment to the draft that I have presented by adding a section out of the Niagara Region's Code of Conduct under conflicts of interest, section twelve point one. And that would also entail a couple of definitions to be added to the definition section of the draft that I have presented you with. But I think the, the real question becomes whether you need that section or not. I will just make a couple of observations in the draft that I have provided to council. Under section four, conduct of members, specifically section four point one C. It says, in all respects, members shall seek to advance the public interest with honesty and to avoid conflicts of interest and unethical behavior. I think it is really up to council as to whether they want to accept the language in my draft, which is quite broad. Or do they want the specificity in the draft or in the, in the code of conduct that the Niagara region has? And I believe that that code of conduct section is in front of you. It is section twelve, under conflict of interest, twelve point one. Members shall avoid conflicts of interest, both pecuniary and non-pecuniary. Members shall take proactive steps to mitigate conflicts of interest in order to maintain public confidence in the region and its elected officials. Members are encouraged to seek guidance from the Integrity Commissioner when they become aware that they may have a conflict between their responsibilities to the public as a member and any other interest, pecuniary or non-pecuniary. The only other things that I want to say is that the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act covers the issue of pecuniary interest and conflict of interest around pecuniary. I believe that the draft that I have presented covers more broadly the, 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 in, in the Niagara draft, it also refers to non-pecuniary, and there is a definition in the definition section of non-pecuniary. I believe that you know, that this is very specific. I'm not sure, and it's totally up to council as to how particular and how specific and how nailed down you want this to be. And I think if, if that is the case, you should incorporate section twelve of the Niagara Code of Conduct in, in this code of conduct that I've presented. If you do that, you'll have to also include a definition of conflict of interest and a definition of non-pecuniary interest. If you want to deal with this much more broadly, I believe you can accept the the code of conduct that I have provided to you in draft simply because I believe it covers the same ground with much less specificity. And again, I'll read it. In all respects, members shall seek to advance the public interest with honesty and to avoid conflicts of interest and unethical behavior. So I believe that would be broad enough to cover pecuniary and non-pecuniary conflicts of interest. And I believe as well that pecuniary conflicts of interest are otherwise covered in the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. So I have no strong feelings. You know, I certainly, I certainly won't be out of sorts if you, if you want to incorporate section twelve in the Niagara Regions draft or in their code and put that in into my draft. But I, I mean, it's, it's really a question for council. How specific do you want to be? Is broad and general more what you want? All encompassing, or do you want to, do you want to be so specific that you're dealing with a very particular circumstance? So that's, that's really what, what, what I, what I have to say. Happy to take any questions. And you know, I certainly appreciate Counselor Bothwell bringing the conflict of interest section to my attention. And really, I think it's a matter of really whether, how, how specific council wants to be. So again, if you want to incorporate what is the Niagara Regions section twelve into the draft that I've presented, that's okay. I have no, no, no issues with that if you want to be that specific. But you also have to incorporate the two definitions into the definition section, I suggest, if you do that. So that's really mayor and council, the remarks that, that I intend to bring in, and I really think it's up to council. How specific do you want to be?
Great, thank you, Charles. Counselor Vane?
Thank you so much, Charles, for your work on this. As you're the experienced with this, I'm going to go with what you suggested, and I've said this earlier to my counselor counterparts, that I don't want to be so specific that we, we miss out on corrections that we should be making and stuff. I believe what you've done is excellent, and I thank you for your time, and I will be supporting it the way you presented it. Thank you.
You know, again, in, in response, I have no strong feelings one way or the other. I, I think they're both good. I think it's just a question of how specific do you want to be?
Thank you. Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, and I appreciate Mr. Harnick's review of and consideration of this item. Further to what I sent to him earlier, I submitted some further examples from three other municipalities that use almost exactly the same wording, the County Frontenac, the Niagara on the Lake, Saint Catharines, and Port Hope. And as I went further into doing some quick online search engine searching, I was amazed at how many municipalities in Ontario actually use this, this wording and those definitions in their code of conducts. John Masgren in his Primer on Municipal Conflict of Interest presented to the twenty sixteen Osom Conference and Trade Show. An example that he used in there, and he asked, is the conflict of, the MCIA complete? Is it, does it cover what it needs to cover? And he had an example of Mayor Hazel, Mayor Hazel McCallion's situation with the mayor's son and the failed attempt of his company to acquire some land in Mississauga and how that evolved into a judicial inquiry where the conflict of interest, it was deemed that she did not breach her statutory duties under the MCIA, but she did have a real personal conflict of interest and breached her common law obligations. And the justice in that case noted that the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act doesn't, does not constitute a complete codification of the law governing conflicts of interest for members of council. Common law also applies. And in his ruling, he, he comes up that, saying that counselors and staff are not to use their office to promote private interests, whether their own or those of relatives or friends, they must be unbiased in the exercise of the duties, and that's not the only, that's not only the common law, but the common sense standard by which the conduct of municipal representatives ought to be judged. So my point is, on bringing this forward, is that the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act is not complete in the sense that it doesn't deal with non-pecuniary issues, and as a result, I believe we have a little bit, a gap in our code of conduct in that we can't require our integrity commissioner to investigate non-pecuniary cases. We also haven't defined conflict of interest in our descriptors. So by not having it in our descriptors and not having it within our code of conduct, we have a gap where we may not be able to investigate an alleged breach. So this, considering the, the strength of these arguments by John Masgren and his firm and a number of other, the, actually, the fact book audit for the region recommended that this language be put into the Niagara Regions Code of Conduct. So there's so many prevailing legislative weight out there that this is important for communities to, to help communities build trust in their councils and for transparency and accountability. To have that definition in there gives that added confidence to our community that we are doing everything we can to protect their interests, both from a financial, pecuniary, and non-pecuniary interest when we're dealing with issues that are, are coming before us. So I really feel it's, it's extremely important in my mind that this be incorporated. I don't think we're, we're being petty. I don't think we're being too specific. I think what we're doing is we're being leaders and saying this is important to us as a council and a community to be transparent and accountable. We feel it is valuable and important to put in our code, and therefore, we're going to follow with, with a number of other municipalities who have felt the same way and put it in and strengthen our code to show that, that we feel this is important. So I'd like, I drafted the motion for the clerk and sent that to her, which is basically what Mr. Harnick said, was to amend the code of conduct to include the definitions and the new section on conflict of interest. It would just need to, might need to be modified to include the other definition of conflict of interest, as he noted, but I would like that motion to be put forward for a vote.
Right. Counselor, Mayor, through you, I just want to make, make one comment, and that is to say that I, I agree with everything that Counselor Bothwell has said. Except for one thing, and that is that under the, the draft code that is before you, I believe that under four one C, you don't have a narrow definition of, of conflict of interest. You don't, it is not defined. And I believe that if someone pointed out a conflict of interest that was non-pecuniary, I would, under four one C, still have the authority to investigate that conflict. So I think that's the only, the only area where, where, where I, where I differ in my opinion with, with Counselor Bothwell. But again, I, I think it all comes down to how specific do you want to be? And, but I don't believe that I would be precluded as an integrity commissioner from taking a look at a conflict of interest that was brought to me that was non-pecuniary. And of course, it would be, you know, a fact situation that I, I believe I could entertain. I can't guarantee that I'd uphold it depending on the facts, but you know, it, it becomes fact dependent.
I appreciate that, Mr. Harnick. I just think that by not having a definition of what conflicts of interest are, at this point, we have to rely on what the code says, and it only has the CIA in it. So because we don't have a definition of what is conflicts of interest, I think it's up to interpretation, and that just could be a gray area.
You know, look, I, as, as I said, I have no, I have no issue with greater specificity if that's what you folks decide.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Harnick. Thanks for your report once again. Leaving the, leaving this report the way you've written it, do you believe it would make us any less accountable or less transparent?
Sorry, I'm not sure that I understand your question. Do you, are you asking me whether the draft that, that I've prepared would make you? Or are you referring to the, the additional wording?
No, to the draft that you have written.
Yes, do I think it will? I, I, I don't think so. I mean, I, I, this draft was not created because there was a view that you weren't being transparent. The draft was created because it is, it is more specific than what you had. It is numbered, and if someone is going to make a complaint, they now have the ability to refer to a particular heading and section, so it's easier to follow. Um, so it's easier to follow. Um, it is broken down in into more component parts, I think, which makes it easier to follow. And it has a number of things in it that were not in the uh, the the original, uh, the original uh. Bylaw that you uh that you that you're now operating under. Um, it also incorporates the um uh, the protocol. Uh, which tells you how to file a complaint and and how a complaint proceeds through the process. So I think it it's it's a more comprehensive draft. Um, it's not there because there's a suggestion that council wasn't being transparent. But I think it's easier for councillors and for the public to follow this than what you had.
And thank you for that. And um, again, I I, so I go back and do we want to be specific? Or do we want to give the leeway to our integrity commissioner to determine certain things? Um, so I yeah, I know that you. Are not offended one way or another, but uh, we've asked you to do this. You've brought us back a product, so I'll be supporting your uh. What you've brought forward. Thank you.
Councillor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Um. So my comment to to this, and thank you, Charles, for the report or for the draft to our bylaw, but um. I find when we talk about that it's the more specificity or or more specific to um. Non pecuniary conflicts, I I think that it's also quite nonspecific, like it's very. Very vague to say like a non pecuniary conflict of interest, like, so if I, for example, I have kids, and if I end up. Um, becoming involved in the uh. I don't know, the baseball association or the soccer association or the cadets. If I was, if I was involved as a volunteer at the cadets. That we just voted on today and um. Or these are in the municipal conflict of interest act, it talks about like exemptions where, but this would be for pec- pecuniary conflicts, but talks about. Things that are for the greater good of the community, right? So if if I um support. Um, say, Grimsby Minor Hockey, and I have a child who plays Grimsby Minor Hockey, so. Like, I would agree, maybe there is some conflict there that my child plays Grimsby Minor Hockey, but Grimsby Minor Hockey is in general. Um. A benefit to all residents, anyone can play. And um. So then the issue becomes like for for councillors like myself and Cadwell and. And Dunstall and Richie and and Mayor Jordan, some of us who've who've lived here for ever, and um. Every time I turn around, there's someone else that I know, every application that comes through. Sorry, not every application, but so many applications that come through the uh Committee of Adjustment and um. And various things, the people that I know and the people that I know well. Right? It's like, um, I'm often looking it out into the audience, I have people that I've known for decades and um. So where where does does my association with them become a conflict of interest? And when do I have to declare conflict? And um then if someone were to challenge through my association or anyone's association. Um, how is it proven that I, that the conflict exists? And that and that's not my actual opinion. Regardless of the um association. To the, to the club. And this is a question, I guess, to um Charles Harnick, how? How would that be determined without me just admitting or anyone just admitting that my decision was based on? So a certain thing, how is that determined?
It it, it it would do, you know, if you take a look, if you take a look at the 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 Niagara draft code. Um, and I'll just go through it briefly. Non pecuniary interest means a private um or personal interest. Uh, that a member may have, it's non-financial. Um, that would be considered by a reasonable person apprised of all the circumstances. As being likely to influence the member's decision in any matter in which the non pecuniary interest arises. And may include, but is not limited to, an interest that arises from a relationship with a person or entity. So I'd suggest, and and let me give you a ridiculous example. Um, if you have a a a child who's playing in uh in in organized hockey. And something comes to council um that is going to mean, uh, and this is ridiculous. Um, that if you vote a certain way, um, your child may make the team. But if you vote a different way, um, yours, somebody else's child is going to make the team and your child may not. Crazy example, but um, that's a situation where you have to say, I have a personal interest in this. Now, I don't think anything turns on whether whether you're going to look at the Niagara draft or mine, but somebody can allege. He voted the way he did because it got his kid on the team. He should have recused himself. Um, and I think somebody could bring, but it, but it's, all of these things become fact dependent. But is there a personal benefit, non pecuniary or pecuniary, that you get um for voting a certain way? And and it's it's a very, I I, these are not easy, easy questions, and it's a very scary. Um, it's a very scary dilemma for uh uh for a municipal politician uh to have. Um, and 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 it means, it means that, you know, when when the mayor, when the mayor says at the beginning of every me- every meeting. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare here? As you say, you know, all kinds of people, you know, you know, every, every, uh, everything that goes on in the community, you know, all kinds of people. You have to read your material and be very, very careful about when and where a conflict can appear. Be it pecuniary or non pecuniary, it is a conflict of interest broadly speaking.
What about something like, say, for example, um heritage, right? There there are some members of our of our council. That that are very, very um passionate about heritage and and the the older buildings in the town of Grimsby. And um, when does their interest in heritage buildings become a conflict to? So like, a person that is not so interested in that, and and sometimes, because we're a split council, like we're, sometimes our the votes are on one. Like, it's, so a person whom is has.
Let me, let me stop you there, because again, um, what what an integrity commissioner would be looking for. If if somebody alleged a conflict is what personal benefit? Did that person get? Um, that they wouldn't otherwise have received. And you you know, if if somebody's passionate about heritage, um, and um, you know, that's. Uh, you know, something that 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 they want to advance. Um, unless you can show that there's some personal benefit that they're getting out of it, and that's why they're really voting the way they are. Um, there's nothing wrong with being passionate. That doesn't, you know, you have a personal interest in advancing heritage, um, like the heritage characters of your community. Um, that that's, that's okay. Um, it's when, by doing it, there's a certain personal advantage accruing to you that others don't have.
Okay, um, so.
It's, and and and, you know, I I I um, I I think it's, you know, it's it's a really difficult, dangerous um area. And um, you you know, I I, there's nothing simple about this. Um, and and, you know, and so I I, I have no allegiance to what I've put before you. Um, nor what councillor Bothwell has has uh, um, I think, um, you know, quite beneficially put in front of a council. I I, I'm agnostic. Um, I I think one is very specific, one is very general. Um, and uh, I I think both will suffice and cover the, cover the ground, but the real reality is. Regardless of whether you pick one or the other, it's all a matter of what the facts of any given situation are.
So then, it it doesn't matter which which we picked, it it kind of is the same. Like, we're upheld to the same integrity?
I I think, I think one is, one, the 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 way that, the way that councillor Bothwell's um. Draft reads, um, i- is is probably um of more educational benefit. Um, to the members of council. Um, and I think that's a reason that you should consider adopting that particular approach. However, in terms of my involvement, it wouldn't matter to me whether I saw. The approach that councillor Bothwell's taking or the approach that I've given you. I believe that my 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 draft is broad enough to allow me to investigate um. Everything that that uh is referred to in 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 the Niagara draft.
Okay.
Okay, I don't, I I I don't know if that helps you, helps you or makes you more confused.
No, tha- thank you, Charles.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Charles. Uh councillor Frake, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Harnick. Um. One thing for sure, you've you've delivered a very clear document that is certainly a long way from where we used to be, and that's great, that's fantastic. You've you've made, you've you've got all the I's dotted and the T's crossed, and you've made it very specific as to. You know, there's there's clarity, there's a lot of clarity there it wasn't before. However, I I I like specificity because I think it it doesn't, it it. Puts us in an area where we weren't very before, we had too many open areas. I think specificity is is actually going to do us more good than harm. And as you said, at the end of the day, whether we adopt your suggestion or councillor Bothwell's suggestion, we're in the same place. At the end of the day, if it goes to you, the IC, then you're going to make that decision as to where it is. So having some specifics in there, I don't think is a bad thing. I think it's probably a good thing. So uh uh, there's no harm in any of us on council leaning towards this, the more specific version. So I I think that's where I'm going to go. I mean, we can go the other way too, but we end up in the same place. If if we, if we end up at at your desk. At some point in time with anything related to code of conduct, you're going to be doing the same things and making the same decisions anyways. But I still like the idea of having something more specific in the document, and and I encourage the rest of my council to think the same way. Uh, you can comment on that if you want. I think I'm kind of saying what it's already been said.
Well, I think, uh, you know, look, that perfectly fair, and and as I say, um, you know, I don't have um. Uh, an allegiance to one way or the other. It's really a decision you have to make. And this is a good debate because it's focusing council on a very important decision. Um, and and regardless of which one you make, I think the educational value of the discussion we're having tonight. That promotes the importance of being cognizant of conflicts of interest, um, to me, makes this um, regardless of what you decide. A very worthwhile exercise. So I commend you for it, and I commend councillor Bothwell for uh, uh, for doing the uh, the work that she did.
Uh, thank you very much.
Councillor Vardy.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Harnick, for all the work that you've, that you've done on on this. Um, I also want to thank councillor Bothwell for uh, the research that that she's done. So for me, in looking at this, I guess I'm inclined to agree with councillor Frake. I, I prefer the specificity. Uh, the reason being, if I look at the research that councillor Bothwell has done, the trend seems to be. Uh, that you name it, and you know, so that you're sending a message to the public. That um, that it's, it's all kinds of conflict of interest, not just necessarily a, a monetary conflict of interest. And uh, given that it it seems to be the, the trend that you're actually articulating this. Um, I'm, I'm inclined for the public transparency, for the import that it gives to the um, the whole question of conflict of interest. To support that specificity of including it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vardy. Uh. All right, uh councillor Bothwell, um, I'm so sure you're going to uh move the your resolution in a second there. Councillor Vardy.
I just, uh, Mayor Jordan, excuse me, I just, with respect to the motion that I sent to the clerk, I just added some additional language. As Mr. Harnick noted, that we should include the definite conflict of interest. And I just um provided her with that paragraph under the definition section from the same uh draft region.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have that updated. Moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Vardy, resolved that bylaw fourteen seventy-three as amended be repealed and bylaw twenty seventy-four be approved. As amended to include the two definitions, conflict of interest and non pecuniary interests. And section twelve point one of the Niagara region's code of conduct. So the clerk will do the recorded vote.
Councillor Bothwell?
Uh, yay.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Frake?
Yes.
Councillor Cadwell?
Jordan, are we voting amendment to that, or are we voting on the resolution?
We're voting on the motion with the amendment.
Okay, it was, when it, when did the amendment happen? Did we vote on the amendment or it was?
That's what we're voting on right now.
We're voting on the amendment?
Yes, so the main motion would have been uh, to receive by twenty seventy-four. As this, but uh, there was a motion to amend, which was to include the two definitions and section twelve of the Niagara region's code of conduct. So that we're voting on the amendment, on the inclusion of the amendment.
Can I ask that you recall the vote?
We have a, we have a point of order on that, because we didn't have a first and a second on the original resolution, and then we need a first and a second on the amendment.
So when the, oh, the main motion would have been resolved that bylaw fourteen seventy-three as amended be repealed and bylaw twenty seventy-four be approved. But because there is a motion to amend, the motion to amend will be addressed first. So right now, yes, there is a mover, councillor Bothwell and councillor Vardy on the amendment. So right now, we're voting, so just to clarify again, we're voting that uh bylaw fourteen seventy-three as amended be repealed. And bylaw twenty seventy-four be approved as amended to include the two definitions and section twelve of the Niagara region's code of conduct.
So we're not voting on the amendment, we're voting on approval of the bylaw?
That is, as amended, so the bylaw as amended.
So when did we vote whether it would be the original way that Charles Harnick, so Charles Harnick proposed the draft bylaw? And then we added some stuff to it. When did we add that? And did we, did we vote on that amendment?
That's what we're doing right now with the amendment.
Well, it sounds like we're approving the bylaw as amended, but it, but so what if I want it to be, how do I vote for it to be the original way?
So you defeat this, the amendment, and then we'll read the uh main motion, and you you can approve the main motion.
We are in an amendment, we're not, we're not approving the law, we're approving the amendment.
Yes.
Okay. We, I, I thought you said that we would be approving the bylaw as amended.
Well, the amendment would be to.
So I'm, I, like, if we're approving the bylaw, it's a different thing than if we're approving an amendment to the bylaw, because the. The bylaw, so we would amend it, and then we would vote to approve the bylaw. In my opinion.
We're approving the bylaw as amended. That's why I read it.
Point of clarity, wouldn't you not have to have the origi- like, you'd have to have the bylaw and the repeal version that Mr. Harnick put there? You'd have to have a mover and a second, have that on the floor, and then a a councillor then can make an amendment to it. Which then we'd be, we, and that's what I'm saying, we did not have a mover and a second on the original motion.
Yeah, that, the, as uh, the clerk uh has said, uh, this is the correct, correct procedure for this.
So. Come on, guys.
So I'm going to continue. So just to clarify again, we're voting on the amendment to repeal bylaw twenty seventy-four be approved as amended. So Counselor Bothwell?
Yeah.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Nope.
Counselor Ritchie?
No.
Counselor Sharp?
No.
Counselor Vane?
No.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
So that's carried.
Mayor, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Charles, for all the work you've done.
No, it's my pleasure, and, and, you know, I, I, as I say, I, I'm agnostic as to. How you voted, but I am really happy that. We had the debate, because it demonstrates. To me, and I think to anybody who was watching this, that council. Considered this and. And, and, and worked very hard to. To understand a very difficult part of the responsibilities that follow municipal elected officials. So I think kudos to all of council for the debate and the hard work.
Well, thank you from all of council. Thank you very much. And, and really, we have a much better document now, and something that can be much easier, easier to work with as well. So thank you again, and we'll talk to you soon, Charles. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Charles. Up now, we have a report, FIN twenty dash thirteen McNally House Hospice waiver of zoning bylaw and amendment fees. And our treasurer, Stephen Greniger, will be speaking on that. Stephen?
Thanks, Your Worship. So, um, at the previous council meeting, McNally House requested through a delegation. The waiver of zoning bylaw amendment fees of approximately thirty-one thousand dollars. McNally House Hospice is applying for a zoning bylaw amendment pertaining to nineteen Landwood Avenue. In order to permit access to the vacant parcel of land adjacent to the hospital. And to provide a parking area to support a new ten-bed residential hospice. So under the planning, that council is authorized under section sixty-nine-two to reduce or waive application fees. With respect to planning matters, that council deems to be unreasonable to require payment. In its deliberations, council may want to consider that waiving application fees may set a precedent for future requests. In terms of financial impact, to date, year-to-date, the planning department for zoning amendment fees. Has achieved approximately twenty-five percent of its seventy-seven thousand dollar budget. So of course, waiving any additional fees will have a negative impact on the twenty-twenty planning budget. Also, council should also consider that it wouldn't only be zoning fees that may be required to be paid for this development. You could also be looking at site plan fees and development charges, which would be similar in range to the zoning application fee. So that's my report. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Questions from council? Counselor Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Stephen. This. These fees that we could give up if we pass this through, or not pass it, is, is not, is not. Like a nonprofit or charitable organization, we're giving this money back to. It's, it's really, we're giving it back to. Care, care, high care facilities, is that right? I mean, that's what we're doing here.
That, that's correct, yes.
Yeah.
Hospice, yes.
We're setting, if we're going to be setting a precedent. What would we be setting a precedent against if we were doing it for something like that? I mean, what, what did you have in mind? Can you give me some examples? Would it be the hospital, or?
Potentially, it could be any other nonprofit that maybe, that maybe owns property that is looking to. To do some work or to expand maybe on their property. So there would be fees involved with that. So that kind of precedent, so it would be like, you know, in effect, granting funds. To the, to the organization.
But tell me again, what's, what's your version of what McNally House does?
Uh, it's an, and from what I understand, it's an end-of, end-of-life care facility.
So would we not want to allow some? Some of that money to give back to something, someone who's at the end of life? I mean, that's how I see, I'm looking at this thing through a different set of eyes. It's not.
Yeah.
Not the Boy Scouts, it's not the Girl Guides, it's totally different here, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, they, you know, they do great work in the community, and they have, and. Absolutely, I agree with you a hundred percent. Since, you know, since they opened, I believe it was. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was two thousand and twelve, I believe. You know, they provided care for, for, for many people and, you know, support for their families. It's, it's been, it's been a great organization, for sure.
Well, yeah, I just, I just, because of the nature of what they do, I tend to, I tend to want to lean towards letting them, letting them off of this. Because I think we need to be seen as. I mean, let's face it, we're all going to be there one day. I mean. I don't even know how to word this, but I mean, it touches my heart that it is, that we have this in our, in our community, and it does such great work. And I know this is a board too, and I'm sure that Counsel Vardy and Counsel Cadwell will have a word to say about that. But anyways, I, I think we should, we should err on the side of good here, and that's, that's my.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not providing a recommendation in the report. I understand, you know, like I said, that the work that the organization does and how it has benefited the community. So, you know, it's, this is a council decision on how they want to, how they want to move forward.
Yeah, as I say, I might think differently about this if it was a non-charity or, or a charity or a nonprofit organization. Uh, this is totally different. Anyway, thank you, Stephen, appreciate the.
You're welcome, yep.
Uh, Stephen, just to interrupt for a second, because maybe you can clarify this. You said they've been around since two thousand and twelve. When they built their original building, did we waive fees? And at that time, just a question before.
That, um, that I'm not sure if I can look into that. There was a waiver of tax back in two thousand and twelve. Actually, actually, no, I think it was two thousand and ten then, because we did waive some tax back in two thousand and ten.
Okay, thank you.
I'm only waiver of tax, because hospices became exempt from taxation across the province in two thousand and eleven.
Great, thanks. So you get back to me on that, then. Counselor Cadwell, you're up next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and I just. I am supportive of this. Again, I think we have to take every submission. Is it precedent setting? Yes, it could be. But we have to take every application at all the merits, if it does, if any further. Ask come to us. So to me, this is a very, very important ask. But I just wondered, I asked a last council meeting if the region was interested in to waiving any, any fees. And I'm just wondering what fees, if there are fees that would be involved, which I, I think there are. But if you got, have you been able to get back from the region mayor or counselor verdict? What's the region's position on waiving any fees that they have any? Like to, like to hear that too. Thank you.
Yeah, as of right now, and I don't know, I can't speak for Counsel Furtick, but he will probably comment as well. I haven't heard back from staff yet on the. Willingness to waive fees right now. So that question has been asked, I just haven't heard back. Thank you. Counsel Furtick?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think the application, first of all, has to be approved by the municipality. And then you make that application to the region, and, and then they would consider it. And I don't know what they would consider and what they wouldn't consider, but it has to be approved by council first. So when, when council approves it, send it to the region. And ask them. Does that help you?
Yeah, somewhat. I've just, I know just some other, other hospices in the, in the area. The one off of St. Catherine's, up Ontario Street there. I'm not sure whether the region was involved with that too. So it's just, it's just an ask that I think is a very fair ask to the region. And as long as, as long as we've, we've made the, the ask to the region, that's, that's the important part to me right now. Thank you.
Counselor Vardy.
Thank you. Um, I think I mostly just have, have questions, and I'm, I'm not sure, Stephen, that you can, you can answer them. But, you know, one is, where, where do they get their, their funding? Do they get it from the province, from the municipality, or from, from the region, rather? Where, you know, where did they get the, the money to expand? Do they have, for this expansion, do they have to do fundraising in order to, you know, community fundraising? And I, and I guess last question is, are Greensby residents given preference over other residents? If two people are coming in at the same time, like how wide an area do they serve? And if you live in Greensby, are you sort of a preferred entry?
Uh, with regard to McNally's funding sources, I can't really speak to that. I'm not really sure if they have any provincial funding. If there's any funding from the region, but I would imagine there would probably be community fundraising, community support for the organization. And the second part of your question, in terms of who, who actually can go to the hospice, I believe it's West Niagara residents.
Okay, and do Greensby residents get, get preference?
That I'm unsure of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I appreciate that we have to watch that we're not setting a precedent in the uniqueness of this ask. Is there any benefit to having legal review this to see if there's a way to? Whatever, however we word this, that. It's without prejudice, and also that they understand that there is no further waiver of fees or benefits to, to. Can be brought forward with respect to this particular application. Or like, do you think there wouldn't be any benefit to asking legal to review? This is for Stephen.
For you, Mayor, to Counselor Bothwell, I would say that there wouldn't be any benefit. I think we can differentiate this ask from, you know, being a hospice from other asks and non-charity organizations. So I don't think there'd be any benefit with getting legal involved. We can contain this hospice, as Counsel Frank said, is extremely important. You don't have many in many municipalities. And we could differentiate that from any other ass.
Sorry, thank you, CEO. And can we, in our, in the way that we word the motion, make sure that they know that this, there is, they can't come back for further. Requests with respect to this particular application, or is that, that they know that they shouldn't come back and ask for more?
I, I guess that would be up to council to, in a resolution that's brought forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Vane?
Um, McNally House is, is one of my favorite Grinsby charities. I've been to different fundraisers for them and stuff like that every chance I get. Again, I come back to what I've said before. We're cherry picking which charities we want to support here. We either support the ones that service our community, or we don't. We can't keep just saying, well, this one's more important to me than the other one. And we're saying, well, you know, this is perception, and we're setting precedent. We're setting precedent no matter what we do. I agree that the CEO is correct and that it's a unique charity. But is someone helping you at the end of the life more important than somebody trying to save your life? You know, is, is the hospital, are we going to waive all the fees on the hospital? What are we going to say to the taxpayers when they come back and complain, because we're doing cost of living increases on their taxes, and they're going nuts on us? I mean, we, I've seen this, some members of this council try to make issues out of four thousand dollar motion that was just part of housekeeping. And try to make it a big deal, and yet we're talking about waiving thousands of dollars every time we get a charity we like. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm totally for it. I'm one hundred percent for this. But we've got to come up with a policy or some way of dealing with charitable requests that come forward, and not just cherry pick the ones we happen to think are more important. It's either all or none. So, and I'm not suggesting we don't support McNally. I want to support this, I really do. But at the same time, I'm tired of telling other charities, sorry, you go somewhere else. Counselor Vardy actually raised a really good point, because I remember we had Gamru come forward several months ago. And her, she made a big deal out of it. Well, they should be going to the federal government because they're part of the Coast Guard. McNally House will be funded by the provincial government. But now we're being asked to.
Point of order, point of order. I, I don't like the comments that I made a big deal of it. I think that's inappropriate.
Okay, I think we're being.
That was inappropriate. Mr. Mayor, would you like to make the call, please?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's a valid point of order. We're getting off topic now.
Exactly.
Completely. And quite honestly, right now, we're just receiving this report. So the, the debate for approving it can be done another day, quite honestly.
That's fine, but my point is very relevant. What I'm saying is very relevant. We, we continue to get these requests. All I'm saying is that we need, McNally House is hugely important. The palette of care is so important to people. You talk to people who have had it, and families who have experienced it. It is hugely important, and I don't want to diminish that. All I'm saying is, we've got to be careful. How we do this. Maybe we need to develop a policy before we start talking about these things. We bring it in as a report, that's great, but what does that say to McNally House? Nothing. I want to support this, but I want us to be even keeled here. All I'm saying is, let's be fair to everybody. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I guess my question would be to Stephen, and understanding in Stephen's report about the. Twenty-five percent is, is a big hit on the, on the revenue side from the planning. Are there other, other supplementary funds that we could maybe look at to help offset the thirty-one thousand dollars? If it does get approved to, I've just got my, my reserve and reserve balance sheet in front of me here. And I'm looking at, there's the budget contingency, there's a dividend, there's also, again, the stipit, the hydro stipit. So again, just in moving forward, can we look at, you know, maybe taking money from other areas to, to offset this to the, the expense? That's just my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I can, I can speak to that. Basically, we, we wouldn't fund it from another source. What would happen is. The, the planning revenue would end up in a, in a deficit, say, if, if that's the, the overall. If that's what, and we end up in at the end of the year in a deficit position. Uh, and they would just be at the end of the year funded from users, the overall deficit, the overall town deficit. So I wouldn't look to, to fund it right now, because, you know, we could have other revenues that might offset that, offset that cost.
Thank you, Stephen. Counsel Sharp?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. I have a question to, I don't know if it's to Stephen or to the planning department. But approximately how much are these fees that we're going to waive? And I know you had said, or someone had said that. Planning has a budget, the, the budget was seventy-five thousand. We've achieved about twenty-five percent of that, which is around eighteen or nineteen thousand of the seventy-five thousand dollar. We expected to collect in planning fees. How much would these planning fees be? Is it? A change in use? What is, what are we waiving? And what's the approximate dollar value of it?
Um, so from what I understand, from the, from the actual letter, the correspondence from McNally House, they. they had been quoted about $31,000 in zoning by law amendment fees. So when I say 25% of the, the $77,000 budget, that is a budget of 77,000 just for zoning by law amendment fees. Planning as other fees, site plan fees, official plan fees. There's many other different types of fees within the planning department. But specifically for zoning amendment, zoning by law amendment fees, the budget was 77,000 and we've achieved the year-to-date approximately 25% of that revenue.
So this is, the 31,000 we will be waiving from a zoning by law amendment?
That's correct.
And so we've collected in the neighborhood of 19,000 or 20,000 of the $77,000.
That's correct.
We waive 31,000.
Right.
For McNally House. And what are we in? We're already in October. So like, we're in the fourth quarter.
Yes.
So we, we're not projecting a lot of amendments around Christmas time. So like the deficit, okay, I just wanted to understand that.
Sure.
Counselor Dunstall, you haven't spoken yet.
Thank you, Your Worship. That's correct. So we're looking at a zoning by law amendment of $31,000. If the site plan didn't require it, we wouldn't be seeing anything. So we're talking about a specific budget in the planning department where the total picture isn't clear. We're just talking about the zoning applications that we've received so far. I've been few and far between. And I think, I think it's, from my perspective, I think we should forget about that and just look at what we're asking McNally House to do because they have a plan that needs a zoning amendment. And $31,000 is a lot of money for them to come up with for the project when they're going to be spending a lot of money doing what they're going to do. And from my perspective, I think I, I would support this because I don't think we're going to really, really be out in the planning department total picture. It's just that one budget allocation that we're talking about. And that's all I have to say.
Counselor Frake.
Yeah, I, we're just receiving this report tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Can I call, can I call the question at this point? I mean, I, I think that we're.
Yeah.
Yes, we need a mover and seconder. So Counselor Frake, moving. I need a seconder. Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Dunstall. Report, resolved report, F I N 20-13 dated October 5th, 2020 be received. Did we want a recorded vote?
Sure.
Show it. Okay, Counselor Dunstall wants a recorded vote.
Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall? Counselor Dunstall?
Oh, did I hit it wrong? Sorry. Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan? Yes.
Let's carry.
Up next, we have report F I N 20-14, council expense policy. Stephen, welcome again. Dunstall?
Okay, council expense policy. So a few versions of this policy have already been brought to council for consideration. The last time it's brought forward, council requested that it be postponed until the new C O was in place so that it could also be reviewed by him. So looking at the policy, the policy has several sections. Notably, principles which speak to accountability and transparency, which are part of council's strategic priorities. There's the mandatory requirement section. And in this section specifically, we added election year restrictions. So no spending during an election year. Then there's roles and responsibilities, which outlines the roles and responsibilities of both council and the treasurer. And then in appendix A, it specifically outlines the types of eligible and ineligible expenses that are detailed in the policy, whether it be books and subscriptions, you know, business meetings, hospitality expenses, office supplies, training. And the appendix now includes a small reimbursement for the use of personal cell phones of $20 per month. So the budget that we currently have that was set for 2020 is $20,000 a year. So this would allow for the mayor and each councillor a budget of about $2,200 per year in expenses. Now, the budget can be modified and it can be reevaluate, reevaluated each year during budget deliberations. So that's the policy in a nutshell. I can take any questions from council.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Questions or comments from council? Counselor Vardy?
Thank you. I guess my, my only, well, first of all, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for, for putting this together. I think it, it's important to have. I guess my question is, because it hasn't been stipulated how much per councillor. First past the post might go on several training courses. And then there's no money left for, you know, perhaps other councillors to go to one, you know, municipal event, like, you know, Roma or, or whatever. So, so I guess I'm just wondering, how can we put that kind of protection in place? So that, you know, we've got, you know, it doesn't sort of get all used up by one person or two or three people. And then there, there isn't sort of enough for everybody else to do something. And I, and I'm thinking mostly training. So should we have, and I, I think of conferences as training as opposed to hospitality. So I don't know, you know, do you, do you divide that out? Or how, what are your thoughts on addressing that?
Stephen? Yeah, we can put some language into the, into the policy that specifies. And you know what? That, that's actually a really good point because we didn't. And because it was always my thinking that each councillor of that 20,000 would have their own set amount. And then I would track it. So as expense forms are submitted, I would deduct the amount from their allotment of about $2,200. So you get up to 2,200. It's not first come, first served. Everybody has a fixed amount of money that they're allocated each year. 2,200, I understand, like, you know, to go to more than one conference, there's probably, you know, you probably wouldn't be able to go to two conferences on 2,200 if you take into account registration fees, hotel, travel. So again, you know, coming into the 2021 budget, I understand the, you know, the difficulties of the 2021 budget. But council can always look at that line item in the 2021 budget to see if they want to allocate additional funds. And I know training has been a big, a big thing over the last couple of years and for council as the majority of councillors were new and training was, was important for council.
Thank you, Stephen. Counselor Cadwell.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And thank you, Stephen, for this report policy. I just see two new things. The $20 per month for our phone, which I know most of us use our phones a lot. And now we're coming of age with many, many other municipalities that, that do get that coverage. And I, and I appreciate that. That's great. Thank you very much. Also, the, the two pieces of clothing, you know? I'm wearing a town of Greensby shirt right now. And you know, when you go to conferences and that, you talk to other councillors and that, you learn a lot of what's going on within, within different municipalities and that. But I really appreciate that. Just, just on a quick note here, Stephen, $20,000 is what percent on a levy in case we get some negative reaction to that?
Give me one second.
It's around 0.19%.
A little bit lower, but yeah, 0.16. Roughly 1% is 125,000. Counselor Sharp might have got the exact, exact 1% number, but I just was going by the 125,000 rule.
Yeah, and again, thank you, Stephen, because I remember the past. Not, not many councillors went to conferences and that, and that was of their own choice, and that's fine. But I think we're about a $6,000 a year budget. I do remember that number and that's, that's quite low. But anyways, I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Counselor Dunstall?
Hi, thank you, Your Worship, through you to Stephen. Just a couple of points. The mileage looks bang on, I think 54 kilometers. 54 cents a kilometer is, I think that's industry standard. The meals, that is a guideline. So if breakfast was 18 instead of 15, that doesn't get bounced back or anything like that. They're guidelines because as we know, as we go forward, I think some of these numbers will be somewhat on the small side. The other, I guess the question is that $20 a month cellphone fee, is that something we just put in once a year at $240? And that being said, or how, how do we go about something like that?
The, the, the plan is to submit your cellphone bill. You could submit it every two months, your cellphone bill. And then we will, we'll give you back, say, 40 bucks for two.
Okay, so that's good, eh? Okay.
Yeah. In terms of mileage, our mileage is currently set at 54 cents. I believe Revenue Canada's mileage, though, I think it's, I think it's a little bit higher. I, don't call me, but I think it's 56 cents a kilometer. Ours hasn't been adjusted in years.
Well, I, I, I'm probably two years old now too. My accountant told me 54 for the first 5,000 kilometers and after that it's 48 cents. I think that's the standard. So when I saw 54, I thought that was bang on, but maybe I'm wrong. It could be 56 now. But yeah, that's, that's fair. And just looking at the meals, I just sense that in two years from now, we might be looking at different amounts than what we do now. So is there room for adjustment every year or do you do that once in four years?
Absolutely. I mean, the policy's a living document. So, you know, it can be amended. We, I, I believe the, the idea is to maybe review policies every three to five years. And so, yeah, I mean, if the numbers are due to inflation or a little bit out of whack, then yeah, we can adjust those, no problem.
Yeah, the other, other thing about the, the meal plan I noticed, and don't get me wrong because I'm not a, I, I don't, I don't drink alcohol. But so you can't have, sit down with somebody and have a glass of wine, is what you're saying, and submit that with the wine included. It's not.
Yeah, you can have the wine. You just can't submit it as an expense.
Yeah, what's the reason for that? Is there specific reasons? Is it socially unadaptable now to drink wine or?
I don't.
What, what's the reason? I don't drink wine. So I'm just asking just arbitrarily, why, why is it?
Yeah, I, I think imbibing on town business, I think is, in most industries is frowned upon.
Oh.
Having to reimburse.
If I can jump in. No governments, federal, provincial, allow you to claim alcohol.
Okay, just as good enough. Thank you. Thought I'd bring it up.
Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just a couple of points. So when we received our increase to our salaries as a result of the one-third taxable being taken away from us, the non-account, non-accountable tax benefit of one-third of our salaries, we received a significant increase of roughly almost $3,028 to our salaries. So we're, we're at 23,168 now. And, and we had that study done that showed that we were, we're doing okay with respect to other municipalities, with respect to the amount that they're, they're paying us. What that one-third non-accountable allowance was originally provided for, from Revenue Canada and through the, through the budget at the time, was to provide municipal politicians with a benefit that others didn't enjoy to cover things such as office supplies and the costs that are incurred with the normal routine duties of what we do, which would be your phone and your, your paper and your pens and your other stuff like that. So that was the purpose of that one-third tax benefit. And then when it was removed, we got the money for that now in our salary. So in a way, I kind of see it double dipping in a way. And this is my perspective, when we look at two items, the cellphone, $20 a month, which would be something we would normally have to incur or cover as a normal, everyday part of our business. And the office supplies, which are general office supplies such as pens, paper clips, envelopes and notepads, not for personal use. Those, those two items I just am uncomfortable with because I feel that, that one-third non-accountable tax allowance that we are now receiving in a salary benefit. In my mind, Revenue Canada's intent and the budget's intent of the government at that time was that that provided for municipal politicians to cover those types of expenses. So I'm just a little uncomfortable with that. I would like to at least see the general office supplies taken out at a minimum. And the, the conference, as Counselor Vardy mentioned, and about the, how do we watch that we, we, who gets to go when and how we spend that money? The document, the expense document refers to the conference and workshop guidelines. They were last updated in 2010 and I pulled those out. And it refers to that members of council can go to one conference, the A M O, basically. And if they want to go to something else, and it also talks about, it recommends that everyone have an opportunity to go that, to go to that. If there are other conferences and workshops held from time to time, Alderman are encouraged to attend these conferences and workshops, but their attendance must be recommended by a standing committee and ultimately council itself. The cost of attending these conferences and workshops should be taken out of the conference and workshops budget. And the budget at that time in 2010 in this document was set at $8,000. And every year after, the budget for conferences should rise by 3%. So I have a concern that we're working with a document that's from 2010 that's outdated. I think we need to update this document. I don't think we've been following the protocol in it in, in the sense that I, I know that in 2019, a number of councillors attended both A M O and Roma and whatever. So I mean, there's no issue with that. It's just, I think this, this policy is outdated. We need to update it to better reflect what this new expense policy shows. And just to note that when you mentioned 20,000 is the budget for the council expense policy in 2019, just those conferences alone, and not all of us attended them. In the report that the treasurer brought forward on the disclosure ending December 31st, 2019, we expended $17,340 in 2019, and that was without all of us going. So I'm a bit of a concerned that if we were all to attend one or two conferences, we're going to easily exceed the 20,000 plus all the other things that we're now including as a, as a potential expense, recoverable expense by all of council. So I think we just need to be realistic as to, this year is a, is a bummer year in that nobody's going anywhere. So I know we don't have to worry about over expending that budget this year. But once we get back to the new normal, there's a potential that, that budget, you know, is that sufficient? Is that, how are we going to manage that? So as you mentioned, setting maybe a, a, a number per member, whatever, Stephen. But I think as part of this, we have to include in the motion that we go back and review the, the relevant policies. uh, the relevant policies, especially the conference policy that comprises this. Does that make sense? Uh, I see you shaking your head.
Yes, um, um, actually, yes, you're you're right. And that was something when we were going through the policy, uh, looking at that old, old conference expense policy, which was never really followed. Uh, and taking a stab at at that policy next. So yes, you're absolutely right.
Um, so I think it'd be great if if and you could also share with all of council the purchasing bylaw, because I don't think I've seen that. Um, and there's a conference seminar or workshop policy that I don't think I've seen either. So I think that if we're gonna pass this code, this expense policy, that I think we should all be very familiar with what those other things are. And that maybe there's some needs in there to update those. I'm not sure. But I haven't seen them.
Yeah, um, there's definitely a need to update those. Um, I guess the question now is, do you want to just go forward with this policy? Uh, are you happy with, uh, this policy currently? And then we can update the other ones, um, at a later date. Um, and as in terms of the procurement, um, policy, uh, uh, our new policy or a bylaw will be coming forward in the next month, I believe, um, for for adoption. Uh, there'll be a workshop on that as well. Um, so I I guess I at this time, uh, uh, I guess on the floor is whether this policy is is sufficient.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Uh, councillor Vardy?
I I don't think I have my hand up, sorry.
All right, we just need a mover and seconder for, uh, the motion then. Uh, councillor Ritchie, councillor Cadwell? Moved by councillor Ritchie, seconded by councillor Cadwell, resolved that report F I N twenty dash fourteen dated October fifth, two thousand and twenty be received and that the committee approved the council expense policy attached to this report as appendix A. All in favor?
Recorded vote.
All right, recorded vote. Clerk.
Councillor Bothwell?
Uh, no.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Fray?
No.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yes.
Councillor Sharp?
Yes.
Councillor Vane?
Yes.
Councillor Vardy?
No.
Councill, uh, Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
So that's carried?
Up now, we have report DPW twenty dash thirty six. Brandon talking about? Brandon, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so the purpose of this report is to receive council's authorization to approve the purchase of a new backhoe loader. The new backhoe replaced the existing unit, which is about fifteen years old. Uh, we, we, excuse me, we received two bids on the tender, which are about fourteen hundred dollars apart. Uh, we are recommending that the purchase be awarded to Brent Tractor at a purchase price of hundred and fifty eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars excluding H S T. The funds will be taken from the Public Works capital equipment reserve. And once the new unit arrived, the existing unit will be sold through auction and the proceeds of the sale will be used to offset the cost of the new unit. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, councillor Vardy, you have a question?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I I have two questions and, uh, I may need the treasurer back on here. Um, my first question is, uh, when we had the two million dollar surplus that we found out about a couple, uh, a couple of weeks ago, about a month or so ago, and then it was decided that we would park the money in reserves. So my first question is, uh, while you're talking about this coming out of reserves, um, is this money that was in reserves before we parked more money in? Or after we parked more money in? That's question number one. So perhaps the treasurer can answer that or 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 maybe you can, uh, Brandon. The second question uh, is, is this a purchase that could be delayed to the next fiscal year?
So I I think I should be able to answer the first one, so that the Public Works Equipment, uh, Reserve is a separate reserve, which is funded from self rental rates. So that is totally outside, uh, the, uh, the the other, uh, reserve amounts that, uh, that that you've been dealing with. Uh, the question is, can it be delayed? I'm suggesting no. Uh, the the equipment, piece of equipment is fifteen years old. It's, uh, five years past our normal replacement date. Uh, I don't think it makes good sense to extend the equipment beyond that date. Uh, it's far overdue for replacement. Uh, so I would recommend at this time that, uh, proceed.
Uh, I guess what I'm, um, in the follow-up, uh, Brandon, we're we're beginning of October, so delaying it to the new fiscal year would mean, uh, a delay of two months. Um, do we really need it? A new one within the next two months? Or could we wait until, could we just push this purchase to January and in the new fiscal year?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I I just, I'm not sure what the purpose of the delay is. Uh, we we have a piece of equipment, again, is long overdue for replacement. I'm not sure what what additional two months uh, changes in the fact that it it's funded from a reserve that is specifically set aside for.
So let me answer that. Let me answer that question. Um, we don't know the impacts of COVID. And we don't know what our sort of budget situation is going to end up uh, in December. And I guess because of that, I'm I'm very cautious about all spending. Uh, if we can, you know, delay, defer, uh, until the next fiscal year. Uh, so so we have a handle on where we're at and what our situation is. So if I'm thinking it's only two months, unless unless we like need the new one critically to do some function, could we, could we not just carry this into a new budget year? That would make, uh, a difference when it comes to trying to figure out our situation during this very unusual year of two thousand and twenty.
So so through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, again, that's that's council's ultimate council's decision. My recommendation is that the equipment gets replaced as per the the schedule. It's scheduled for replacement again this year as part of the twenty twenty budget. Uh, it's been on our list for many years. Uh, it's due to be replaced now. So again, my recommendation is that it gets replaced now. But ultimately, that's that's council's, uh, decision if if they choose to, uh, to do so.
If you didn't have it, Brandon, in the next ten weeks, would it cause serious harm to the Department of Public Works?
Chair, Chair.
Yeah, slang.
Uh, I mean, the 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 staff member has made his recommendation. I I don't feel it's fair that the questions continue. He's made his recommendation.
I've asked.
We we support him.
Point of order.
As a C O, I support him.
I'd like it answered, please.
I do not feel it's a fair question.
Or it's not up to you to decide. It's not up to you to decide.
The the staff member has recommended, he's made his best.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor, councillor Vardy, uh, it it is a reserve and I understand that that that, um, the acting director of Public Works.
Step up and do the job, please.
Yeah, can you mute Vane? The, um, acting director of Public Works has made his recommendation. It's out of a reserve that is, uh, is set from a public works reserve that's dedicated to that, and it it's set aside. It's money that can only be used for replacement of this machine, I believe. And, uh, really, uh, replacing the machine now with, um, winter on its way uh, makes sense to me as well, and I understand, uh, uh, where, uh, Brandon is coming from. Councillor Cadwell, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for answering the question.
Councillor Cadwell, you're on mute.
There we go. How's that? Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, for, uh, chiming in on that, too, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with my comments. Um, the machine is five years past its, uh, it it's time. What you have to understand, a lot of companies float their backhoes to different construction sites. And unless it's changed, but I don't believe it is, being the Chair of Public Works, our machines are driven on all around town to different locations. And as the mayor brought up, winter is coming. And if there was ever any, an accident because of a mechanical problem with a with a with a machine that is five years past its expiry date, from a liability perspective, and and us having this conversation, what what could happen to us? So I totally support this. Thank you.
Councillor Vane?
I just want to comment, I I I support, um, what Brandon's saying, but I also want to make a comment that I I understand we're all passionate about this. We do this for a reason. We've we've just got to be careful not to attack each other. That's a big concern with me, and I'm trying not to make a big deal out of it, but we have to respect our staff. And having said that, if, uh, as councillor Cadwell said, having been a former Public Works employee himself, I support councillor or, um, acting director, uh, Wardman, when he says we need this. Five years is a long time. If God forbid, we have and something happened and it's due to the fact that the machine's old and it breaks down and somebody gets hurt or whatever else, then we're into legal liabilities. So that's over and above everything else. But my main point that I want to speak is, please, let's let's just be respectful of each other, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vane. Uh, seeing no further questions or comments, we need a mover and seconder for this. Moved by, uh, councillor Cadwell, seconded by councillor Ritchie. Moved by councillor Cadwell, seconded by councillor Ritchie, resolved that report DPW twenty dash thirty six dated October fifth, two thousand and twenty be received and that the acting director of Public Works be authorized to award the purchase of a new twenty twenty or twenty twenty one backhoe loader from Brant Tractor Limited in the amount of one fifty eight, nine fifty, including H S T.
Did we have a recorded vote?
Yep.
Councillor Bothwell?
Yes.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Fray?
Yes.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yes.
Councillor Sharp?
Yes.
Councillor Vane?
Yes.
Councillor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Uh, yes.
That's carried.
Eric, before we go on to the next topic, I just wanted to make something for the record. Um, but there was only a million dollar surplus, not two million, that came over in two thousand and eighteen on a into the general reserve, which was extremely low. It was only sixty thousand. So I just wanted that clarification for the records that it was only a million dollars, not two million that came over. Thank you.
Great, that's that is noted that the the, um, it was a million, not two million, which is quite a difference. Up next, we have, um.
Uh, Mayor Jordan, may I?
Yes.
Add a comment to that, just for clarity?
Yes, councillor Bothwell, by all means.
Thank you. From the C O, um, I thought there was also a million dollar surplus in the water and sewer, and maybe that's where the two million came from, if you could just clarify that.
You're muted still.
Yeah, I believe that's true, but as you know, in the rate in the water and sewer, it's not something that you can touch outside of water and sewer. So I was just talking about the general levy.
Hey, we have report, uh, P A two thousand and twenty one up next. And Walter Basic is going to speak on that. Good evening, Walter.
Hey, oh, good evening. Um, uh, let me just, uh, call up the particular item on my laptop. Here it is, Eric. Thank you. Um, this is a, uh, this is a request for a draft plan approval extension for, uh, a draft plan of subdivision at Eight Lake Street. Uh, a lot of you may, uh, recall this particular site. Uh, there's a partially uh, partially unfinished, uh, building or renovation, uh, across the street from the arena. And, uh, uh, the application was to create, uh, two lots and, uh, and three blocks, two, two of the blocks were to support, uh, somebody attached dwellings. There is a, uh, zoning amendment that was approved by council in, uh, two thousand and December of two thousand and nineteen uh, to, uh, establish zoning regulations that would, uh, enable the, uh, registration of the subdivision and development of the lands. Um, the applicant has requested, uh, draft plan extension to permit, uh, uh, the applicant to work through the draft plan conditions uh, that were established by our Public Works Department, the region of Niagara and Enbridge Gas. Uh, the subdivision agreement, um, uh, which would satisfy, uh, a vast majority of the draft plan conditions has been, uh, completed. The engineering review has been completed. Uh, the agreement has been sent to, uh, the applicant to to sign, so we're nearing completion. Um, and, uh, hopefully, uh, nearing, uh, the ability to, uh, uh, clear the draft plan conditions and, uh, register the subdivision and enable the, uh, development of the lands. So if you have to answer any questions, uh, we're recommending, uh, uh, the extension of draft plan approval to, uh, the January fifth, two thousand and twenty one.
Thank you, Walter. We have a question from councillor Bothwell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Basic, just if you can refresh my memory, um, so this, the property owner for this one also owns fifteen Lake Street, I believe, and we're in a situation where that one is also pending some action and has been delayed. This one particularly, I know it's been an eyesore with the building on, um, Lake Street being, um, having tarps over it and no one drove by it the other day and it still looks like a very scary building, um, very open and 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 dangerous looking for the sake of people perhaps getting in and in vandalism. I just, we've, have we, remind me how many times we've extended it for this particular applicant on this property and because I think he's come a couple of times now, and I'm just concerned that, um, the subdivision agreement has been sent to the applicant for signing, but it doesn't mean he's going to sign it. And are we looking at potentially another extension in January? And it just seems that a revolving door on these extension requests, and I'm just concerned that um, are are we going to have a final date that we are going to require him to to proceed with this development?
This is the only extension request through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the only extension request that was received for this particular development. And, uh, um, the, I'm not, I'm not sure what your, the nature of your question was. Why was, why has this has been going on first of all?
Well, there was an extension landing. Sorry, wasn't there where, because he wasn't well? And he couldn't.
Yeah, that was, that was for the one across the street. That was for.
Okay, so I thought it's true, yeah. Sorry, I thought it affected both properties, though.
No, no, they're separate, separate applications.
Okay, so are they? So are, okay, they're separate. So this one is progressing as far as you're aware, and we are looking at it that home that's on Lake Street, which was going to be.
That's, that's correct. This is, uh, this is the one that's, uh, that has the home that's partially, um, uh, it's partially renovated, let's say. Um, there, there, there were some difficulties with respect to the engineering review of of the site um, and with the constraints that are, um, uh, that the existing building poses, that the the slope to the west poses. Uh, so it it was a, it was a long, arduous um, review process in terms of the engineering for the site. So a new road has to be constructed, services, services have to be installed in the ground, um, including hydro. So there were, there were lengthy discussions, I recall, with, uh, with, uh, the electrical service provider, um, as well as, uh, you know, with our engineering department. So, uh, yeah, it was, it was a difficult site to to design and, uh, because of the. And because of the constraints that are, that are present there. And so we're, we're confident that it will proceed now. We, we've gotten to a point where the applicant is in a position or will be in a position to sign the agreement, which can be registered. And, and we just need the securities posted. Then we can clear the conditions, register the plan, and the owner can, and can continue with the, I'm assuming the, the first phase will be the, the finishing the, the, the existing building or renovation of the existing building and conversion of that building to a semi.
Great. I, I appreciate that that's the first phase, because I think it'd be really nice to have something finished on Lake Street, because it's just, it's been an eyesore looking at it for a long time. So it's great that that will be phase one, right?
I, the, that particular project has been, part of the project has been started. So I'm assuming that there will be, there will be a desire to get that done as quickly as possible. Yes.
Thanks. That was all my questions. Thank you very much.
Counselor Bain.
I just wanted to add some comments to Counselor Basic. I, I've been very involved with this, as have most members in town, it seems like. There's been quite a few people involved. I've been dealing with this individual and the neighbors beside him and everything else. And he has come a long way. There's been a number of hiccups. Some, you know, were due to miscommunications, others were due to, you know, something was planned in a place that shouldn't have been, that type of thing. This is actually moving along quite well at this point. So I'm quite pleased to see where it's going. It's come farther than it has in a long time. So I expect we'll be seeing some progress on this very shortly. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions, need a mover and seconder for this. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Bain. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Bain. Resolve that report PA 20-21 dated October 5th, 2020 be received and the draft plan approval be extended to January 5th, 2021. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have notice of motion. First notice of motion is by Counselor Bothwell. A review of Noise Bylaw 1122 is amended. Whereas the town of Grinsby currently has in place bylaw 11-22, a bylaw respecting noises to regulate noise within the town. And whereas the community has raised concerns with respect to the levels of excessive noise resulting from illegally altered motor vehicles and other sources of disruptive noise. And whereas such noise can be disruptive and have negative impacts on health of the community and its residents. Now therefore be it resolved that town staff be directed to review bylaw 11-22 as amended to identify areas requiring refinement and strengthening and to conform enforceability in consultation with Niagara Regional Police Service. And that staff bring forward an amended draft bylaw to a public open house for input. And staff further after, and that staff after consideration of all input received, prepare options and recommendations to council for inclusion, inclusion in an amended noise bylaw. I acknowledge that the notice of motion will be given consideration at the October 19th committee of the whole meeting. Another notice of motion, Property Standards Committee appointment, Counselor Bothwell. Whereas the town of Grinsby is required to establish a property standards committee under section 15 dot six of the municipal build, building, or the Building Code Act 1992 SO 1992 C 23 as amended. And whereas section 7.6 of the Town of Grinsby Property Standards Bylaw 15-017, a bylaw for prescribing standards for the maintenance and occupancy of a, of property, states that property standards committee shall be established and coincide with the term of council. And whereas the property standards committee hears appeals of property standard orders that have been issued under the Building Code and the Town Property Standards Bylaw 15-017. And whereas this term of council is not appointed, the required committee consisting of five rate players exclusive of members of council or employees in the municipality or local board. And where it is, whereas it is desirable and expedient to appoint the citizen members of the town of Grinsby Committee of Adjustment as members of the Property Standards Committee, and their appointment coincides with the remaining term of council. Now therefore be resolved that staff be directed to prepare an amendment to section 7.6 of the Property Standards Bylaw to state the members of the Town of Grinsby Committee of Adjustments shall be and are hereby appointed by the Council of the Corporation to be members of and to sit as Property Standards Committee. And that staff amend and align any other sections of the bylaw as required to meet this intent. And that staff provide the amended Property Standards Bylaw 15-017 to council for review and approval at the earliest opportunity and no later than the start of the first quarter, Q1 of 2021. I acknowledge that the notice of motion will be given consideration at the October 19th committee of the whole meeting. Notice of motion, bylaw review process, Counselor Bothwell. Whereas a number of the Town of Grinsby frequently referred to bylaws have not been significantly updated or reviewed for many years. And whereas regular review and updating of bylaws ensures that they remain relevant and applicable to the current environment, community needs, federal and provincial legislation. And whereas monitoring, regularly reviewing and updating bylaws aligns with council's strategic priority of accountability and transparency. Now therefore be resolved that staff be directed to identify and develop, bring forward cyclical schedule of frequently referred to bylaws, including the date which each should be reviewed, notwithstanding that bylaws may be reviewed at any time outside of the schedule should an immediate need arise. And that the schedule be presented to council for consideration during the first quarter, Q1 of 2021. I acknowledge that the notice of motion will be given consideration at the October 19th committee of the whole meeting. And subject open air burning bylaw, Counselor Sharp, resolve that council direct the fire chief to bring a report on the current bylaw 12-40, open air burning, and any recommendations for the November meeting. I acknowledge that notice of motion will be given consider, consideration at the October 19th committee of the whole meeting. Up next, we have correspondence. Need a mover and seconder on the correspondence. Counselor Frake, Counselor Ritchie. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that the written delegation from the Rotary Club of Grinsby with reference to World Polio Day be received. And then October 24th is hereby proclaimed as World Polio Day in the Town of Grinsby, and that the flag be raised on October 24th to encourage and join Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the delegation from Debbie France. Counselor Bothwell, mover, need a seconder. Counselor Frake. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Frake. Resolve that the written delegation from Debbie France with reference to stopping illicit cannabis grow operations be received. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the next correspondence, the restart agreement for anti-racism. Oh, it's the rest of the correspondence, so it's a multi. Counselor Ritchie and secondary Counselor Cadwell. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Cadwell. Resolve that the correspondence under administration and finance with reference to safe restart agreement, anti-racist initiative, and that the correspondence under public works with reference to uploading a section of Livingston Avenue, Town of Grinsby to Niagara Region PW 29-2020 and solid waste management bylaw update PW 34-2020. And that the correspondence under the planning and development with reference to modernizing environmental assessment programs be received. All in favor? That's carried. And the next meeting of the committee of the whole is scheduled for October 19th, 2020 at 6:30 and will be available through electronic participation. Now we're adjourned on the committee of the whole, and we will recess for 10 minutes to come back with our regular con, council meeting. Thank you and good night to the first part and see you in 10. Welcome to the Town of Grinsby Council Meeting for Monday, October 5th, 2020. Calling this meeting to order now. Our first will be playing the National Anthem. All right. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest, counsel? Seeing none, first up, we have the approval of the agenda. Need a mover and seconder if there aren't any additions or changes. Over and seconder, Counselor Ritchie moved, Counselor Frake seconded. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Frake. Resolve that the agenda for the council meeting of October 5th, 2020 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the adoption of the minutes. Counselor Cadwell, Counselor Bain. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Bain. Resolve that the minutes from the council meeting of September 21st, 2020, and the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting of October 5th, 2020 be approved. All in favor? Oh, Counselor Bothwell?
Parliamentary inquiry? I think, or a question on parliamentary procedure here for a moment?
Yeah.
So I'm going over the minutes and I'm looking at report PRO 2001, which was a revenue generation options land surplus review CW 25. And I just would ask the clerk to clarify, because my recollection of that motion was that a motion was, the original motion was on the floor and votes were being taken. And I had voted on the original motion on that item, which was, as it was written in the committee of the whole package. And the motion was interrupted by Counselor Ritchie to bring forward a second motion to table, which was then carried. And I'm just asking the clerk if parliamentary procedure was properly followed in that, in the sense that the original motion was, was currently being voted on. And I believe that no other motion should have been brought forward when the motion was in the process of being voted. And I just wondered if there's anything we can do about that at this point.
Point of order, I don't think she had a seconder for her motion.
It, sorry, it was not my motion, it was the original motion that the clerk had on the table, on the floor from, from the report.
Do you want, do you want to comment on that, then, clerk?
Counselor, uh, see you, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing we can do at this point, because it's already been voted on through council.
The, the normal process then should have been that because the motion was, was being voted on, it should not have been interrupted with a secondary motion. Is that correct?
We would have to go back as Counselor Ritchie was saying that there was no seconder.
But I think.
So if there was a mover and seconder and we started voting?
I believe so.
That's what I understood. It, it was moved, seconded, and then it went to the vote. So, I mean, what I'm asking then is that we review that, that process, because I'm just concerned that the, the proper process wasn't followed on that particular resolution. So I just wanted to document that. And the second thing I just want to comment on quickly is the, the next item that we're approving is the minutes of today's committee of the whole, which just popped into our inbox now. And I'm just a little, feel a little weird about that, that we're going to be approving it with this motion that we just got popped in our inboxes that we haven't even had a chance to review or read. So, I mean, we can approve them, but the potential is that if there's something in there that we have a concern with, we're now approving it. And I don't know how then we bring a correction for.
Point of order, did we not already approve the agenda?
That, we're now approving the minute.
Today.
Of today.
I haven't even had a chance to read it, like, it just came in. I went upstairs and I had a cookie.
Today, if this was a problem, we should have got this up when we were approving the agenda.
Well, I think we're talking about two separate things. We're talking about the committee of the whole meeting today that we just got the minutes for, so.
We can't discuss this further, because we're just adopting the previous minutes, and this process was already approved by council.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Vardy, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the clerk could review the, the, the minutes, or not the minutes, but the, the meeting and address Counselor Bothwell's concern, please. I know she can't do it right now, but bring something back to us at the next meeting.
Point of order, that would be a reconsideration, would it not?
Yes, I mean, Counselor already has voted on it, so there's nothing we can do at this point.
Counsel, through you, Mr. Mayor. If council has acted inappropriately on that vote, I think at the very least, we should know that it was inappropriate and that we make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I, I think that that much can be done, certainly, certainly not from a resolution point of view, but. Yeah, I think that that much can be done, certainly, certainly not from a resolution point of view, but I think we can certainly look at it. It is in public record, so it will be available. So move by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Vane, resolve that minutes from the council meeting of September twenty-first, twenty-twenty and the minutes from the Committee of the Whole meeting of October fifth, twenty-twenty be approved. Recorded vote.
Sorry. The minutes from today, the minutes from the October fifth meeting of Committee of the Whole, I haven't had a chance to review them.
I feel the same way about that.
It's it's in our procedural bylaw that this is how how we do it. We did vote on that and.
I'm just saying, if you could give me a moment to speak, is that so right now we're voting on approving of of the minutes of today's meeting. And so like the it's times right now, nine fifty-two. And so the committee of the whole ended at around like nine forty-one. And we took a ten-minute break. I went upstairs and I had an Oreo because I've been sitting in the basement for a while and I need a little bit of sugar to keep me awake past ten o'clock. We came downstairs, we listened to the National Anthem, and I haven't had time to review these minutes. I haven't.
Well, the Counselor Sharp, if I can interrupt, this isn't our procedural bylaw and this is what we procedurally we approved. So this is this is last Committee of the Whole, we did this and there wasn't a discussion. If you want to.
So at the first Committee of the Whole that we did, we didn't discuss it. I noticed it, but we didn't discuss it. But now I'm noticing it again at our second Committee of the Whole and and I'm bringing it up, right? Because the first meeting we had, the the last meeting, which was our first Committee of the Whole meeting, I noticed it as well. And so now I'm seeing again that like, I haven't reviewed these minutes, but but I need to vote to approve them. And so I would just be, I would be doing a disservice to the people that I represent because I'm approving something that I have, I don't have any knowledge of it. I literally, they just came into my email. This is my comment. It's received by the mayor. Thank you.
All right, I'll read the, our Counselor Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I totally one hundred percent agree with Counselor Sharp. I mean, we don't know, like, we are responsible, suppose we're responsible counselors, and we had a chance to review those minutes. I mean, there could be errors in there. We don't know that. I mean, we're we've been three and a half hours into this meeting and all of a sudden we have to approve minutes that we took three and a half hours to put together.
Counselor Frank, I need to interrupt you on this just because we are going, we're talking about our procedure in something where we are approving minutes and we did agree as a counsel to this procedure. So so what we'll have to do is we'll have to revisit that when the time is appropriate for that. So I'll read the resolution again.
Question, point of inquiry, Mayor Jordan. If we don't approve these minutes, then what happens? So if I vote this down and if I if, what what happens if they're not approved?
Clerk, do you have?
I also have two questions. One is what happens if they're not approved? And then my other question is that if we approve them, the decisions are they're they're final, right? They're ratified.
Actually, I'm just going to read the resolution and then we'll vote on it. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Vane, resolved that the minutes of the council meeting of September twenty-first, twenty-twenty and the minutes from the Committee of the Whole meeting of October fifth, twenty-twenty be approved. I called for a recorded vote.
Can we separate the two? Can we separate the two? I asked the mayor, can we please separate the two approvals?
Yeah, I guess we can. All right, as per Counselor Sharp's request, we've separated them out. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Vane, resolved that the minutes from the council meeting of September twenty-first, twenty-twenty be approved. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm yes. So we need a mover and seconder for the October fifth minutes, moved by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Dunstall.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we defer the October fifth minutes until our next meeting.
That's not going to work because procedurally we will be defying what has been left down by the municipal act, actually, where is it?
Will someone second that motion? Will one of my colleagues please second that? Counselor Freak seconds it. I would like to move to defer approval of the minutes until our next meeting. I haven't read them. I haven't read them. I can't approve.
I have a point of order on that, that would go against our procedural bylaw and you would have to suspend the rules first, which we require two-thirds vote.
To the clerk, does that go, we can defer any motion? It's.
Against our procedural bylaw, you'd have to suspend the rules.
No, we don't.
Yes, yes, Counselor Sharp, we do have to suspend the rules and that needs two-thirds.
Can I ask you, the clerk, to please clarify? What rule are we suspending?
It'd be our procedural bylaw.
I'm not asking Counselor Ritchie, I'm asking the clerk.
Let me find a session for you.
So we would be, we have a motion on the table and I have a motion to defer it, seconded by Counselor Freak. And that is allowed in our procedural bylaw. It doesn't matter that the motion is an approval motion or not, it's a motion.
Council approve the process to have the minutes of Committee of the Whole come directly to council. And that was already approved in our procedural bylaw to approve the minutes. So you would.
Interrupt is that we did bring them and we moved it and seconded it and now I'm moving to defer it. So the process is that we bring them to council, which we have done, and we moved it and seconded it. Now that it's been moved and seconded, I have brought a motion to defer it. So we are following the process. We we held our Committee of the Whole, we closed Committee of the Whole, we produced the minutes, we brought a motion to approve those minutes. I am now bringing a motion to defer that motion. We are following the procedure.
The mayor can order that motion out of order.
I have the floor, but Counselor Ritchie, to the clerk, is it, is it, is this the case that we we have brought the motion and we are only deferring that motion?
Yeah, I'm going to rule that it's out of order and that we can, we need two-thirds, right? So so we'll vote on it right now. Or we can do the deferral? Yeah, so we would vote on the deferral.
So the deferral is allowed? Are we voting on on my motion to defer?
Yeah, but it needs. Yeah, so we'll vote on your deferral, but it does need two-thirds to pass.
Why does a deferral need two-thirds?
The clerk's going to comment on that. It's in our procedural bylaw.
It's just a regular deferral.
What we need to do is we need to waive the two-thirds to make the decision. Is that right? All right, the clerk's preparing the next motion.
So just to clarify, we're waiving the procedural bylaw, section seven-point-four-four, which states that the minutes of each meeting of Committee of the Whole shall be presented at the regular council meeting for approval of the recommendations therein and receipt of the minutes. So it is already in our procedural bylaw, so it needs to be waived through two-thirds.
To the clerk. So the minutes were presented, they've been delivered to the council and they're and they and they were moved and seconded. And now I have a motion to defer that moved and seconded motion. It's been presented and the mayor has brought it to the floor.
The procedural bylaw still needs to be waived.
I I think this is, I I challenge that ruling.
The clerk's just looking up the process to challenge that ruling. So I'll read what what the clerk has presented. Result that the ruling of the mayor to require the waiving the procedural bylaw be upheld. And so we need a mover and seconder for this. Mover, Counselor Sharp, second or Counselor Ritchie? And so recorded vote. So moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolved that the ruling of the mayor to require the waiving of the procedural bylaw be upheld. Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Sorry, point of order, or point of clarification, please. I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Jordan, but I I don't quite understand. Are we, what we're voting on? Are we voting on allowing Counselor Sharp's motion to go through? Or are we voting against that? It's not clear to me with what what you stated.
We're voting to waive the procedural bylaw. Pardon? Yeah, okay, the clerk's going to explain. Thanks, Sarah.
Sorry, I mean.
So the mayor has ruled that the procedural bylaw needs to be waived and Counselor Sharp challenged that. So we're voting whether the mayor was correct in his ruling or Counselor Sharp should overrule that ruling. So right now, if you vote yes, you're ruling with what the mayor has ruled.
So the mayor has ruled.
That it requires the waving. We'll do that afterwards, depending on this ruling, right?
What do you mean it requires the waving, the waving?
Waving of the procedural bylaw, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
No.
Counselor Vane?
So if we vote no, we're agreeing with Counselor Sharp that we want to challenge it?
Yes.
No. No.
Yeah, they're challenging, if you vote, if you vote no, you're challenging my ruling. If you vote yes, you're agreeing with my ruling.
Um. I think he needs the opportunity to be heard. I'm going to go with Counselor Sharp, say no.
All right, Counselor Vardy?
No.
Myself, I'm a yes. So that's carried. So where do we go next? All right, we need a mover and seconder to waive the procedural bylaw and this needs two-thirds to carry. Moved by Counselor Vane. Seconder. Counselor Vardy. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Vardy, resolved that council waives the procedural bylaw five-point-seven-point-four brackets four. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
No.
Counselor Frank?
Please explain to me what I'm voting on again.
You're voting to waive the procedural bylaw. So that leads to, so we can vote on deferring, right?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Nope.
Counselor Ritchie?
No.
Counselor Sharp?
No.
Counselor Vane?
No.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a no. So that's defeated.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
So now we go back to our resolution, moved by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Dunstall, and this is approving the October fifth minutes. So I'll read it. Moved by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Dunstall, resolved that the minutes from the Committee of the Whole meeting of October fifth, twenty-twenty be approved. Recorded vote.
Mayor Jordan, can I speak to this motion?
Can you? Can? Yeah, sure you can speak to it.
So, I mean, I'm sorry to create all this headache. I know it's very confusing. But I mean, I voted down the suspending the rules. But I mean, I voted down the suspending the rules because some of the things that we approved tonight, if we don't approve the minutes, now then it will postpone, and I'm speaking specifically to things like the McNally House.
I think, I think what we need to do is I think we need to just vote on this resolution and move on from this rather than debating it any further.
Sorry, Mayor Jordan, I'm still speaking. I get, we have a procedural bylaw and I get a certain amount of time to speak to a motion. And so please don't cut me off.
So in my opinion, you're off topic right now.
Stop cutting me off. I have, I get five minutes in my first round, I get three minutes in my second round. You'd have to suspend the rules to make a change to the procedural bylaw. We just had that discussion. I'd like my time back for the time that you cut me off here.
I can probably rule that you're off topic and.
I'm not off topic, I'm talking about the minutes that we're approving.
The clerk.
So thank you, Mayor Jordan, for the minutes of tonight's meeting that we're approving right now. If we don't approve them, I think that there are some things that we approved tonight that are time sensitive and and so I think that deferring or defeating them and to the clerk, if we defeated these motions, because we, right now we've if we defeat these motions, what happens? Does the whole meeting go away? To the clerk, can you answer that question for me? What happens if we defeat these motions?
So minutes are not matters for debate. When I've talked to the ministry, they've strongly said that defeating minutes like this or bylaws like confirmatory bylaws would be hamstringing the decision-making process of council and possibly opening up the town to be challenged in the courts.
So we can't defeat it. I'm like, so that's why I wanted to defer it, but I don't.
And really, quite honestly, I don't even think you should be debating it right now. I think we should just be.
I'm not debating the minute, debating, I'm debating the process of approving the minutes. So like right now, like the minutes are not in question. What I'm questioning is what happens if I vote no to this? Because I'm considering voting no to this right now and I think that others of my colleagues are also considering that. And like, from what the clerk just said, voting no to this could put us in a real bad spot. So I wanted to defer it, but like, we defeated that, so I mean, maybe we need some more training or maybe but like, this stuff that I'm discussing right now, it's allowed under our procedural bylaw and and I have an obligation as a counselor to, to consider this before I approve things and I'm, I'm doing my due diligence. I'm sorry that I've raised my voice. It's 10 o'clock at night, right? And I had an Oreo cookie, but I haven't really eaten. So like, it's, it's kind of been a long thing. I think tonight, though, we have to approve this. And I think maybe we should revisit our procedure at the next meeting. Thanks, Mayor Jordan.
All right, I'll read the resolution again. Moved by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Dunstall, resolve that minutes from the Committee of the Whole Meeting of October 5th, 2020 be approved. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall.
Yes.
Counselor Frank.
No.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yes.
Counselor Richie.
Yes.
Counselor Sharp.
Yes.
Counselor Bane.
Yes.
Counselor Vardy.
I'm not going to approve minutes I haven't read, so no.
Myself, I'm a yes, so that's carried. All right. So it's a consent agenda. Yeah. Need a mover and seconder for the bylaws. Counselor Cadwell, Counselor Richie. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Richie, resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number 20-74 as amended and 20-77 inclusive and that be read a first time. On favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the second and third reading of the bylaws. Counselor Richie, Counselor Frank. Moved by Counselor Richie, second by Counselor Frank, resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number 20-74 as amended and 20-77 inclusive read a first time, now be read a second and third time and finally passed in the council. And that the mayor and town clerk do sign and seal the same and the rule of councils to the contrary notwithstanding. On favor? That's carried. Announcements. Up next, we have announcements. Does any member of council have announcements? Counselor Cadwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and just to my, well, there are kind of questions and, but I see that the Regional Road 81 is being, now it's being milled from Roberts Road heading, heading west. Mayor, and I hope, maybe Counselor Vardy can help me out too, but are they going right to Oaks Road? Is that, is that project going to be going right to Oaks Road with the, because that's from Casablanca to Oaks Road. It's been just, well, it was just tar and chip. They did that a number of years ago. So, do you know, Mayor, is that their plan to go right to Oaks Road? And I've got one other, one other comment. Thank you.
I think that there is an original or an eventual regional plan to go right to Oaks Road, but I think that one only goes to as, as far as the Frationi fruit stand, as far as I, as far as I know.
Good, thank you, Mayor. That's good to see, getting those repairs done. The other thing I wanted to just bring to, to all of council's attention and, and the viewing public. I've been getting a lot of questions about the self-service road. We're all been, I'm sure we all have against, with the construction and that. And I reached out to the Vice Chair of Public Works at the region and he gave me a response back, an email. And what they're hoping to get done with the weather and everything, I'll just read the last part of the email here. But they do have a lot of work that they have to be completed. They have to tie in some of the, some of the where we hit the raised manhole, Elizabeth Street, they have to do some water main tie-ins to the, to our, to our town system. But it says, "The final roadworks completion and reopening of the self-service road is expected by November 30th." Which is still a couple of months away. And then it says, "Note, paving and road opening date is subject to successful leak detection and repair." So anyways, I've had a number of inquiries. Some people were saying they thought it was going to be August, it would be completed, but the gentleman at the region, Tony, he said they're hoping to have it all completed by November 30th. So, and that's before, hopefully before the winter time too. So that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Richie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see behind me there, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. You know, I'm sure all of us know somebody who has been affected by this. Education is the key to help prevent it or, you know, to help get early treatment. So I just wanted to make everyone, you know, bring this to everyone's attention. And there's lots of information out there on how you can educate yourself in regards to this. But again, just want to make everyone aware, so wear pink this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Richie, Counselor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'd like to make a notice of motion to amend the procedural bylaw at the next meeting.
We need two thirds to introduce this.
Get the notice of motion. I can, I can make a notice of motion before the end of the meeting. I'll send it by email to the clerk. I'm typing it right now.
Well, Counselor Sharp's typing out his notice of motion. I have an announcement. With Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving holiday coming up this weekend, I just want everyone to, to celebrate with your families, but I implore you to use proper social distancing, wear a mask when you, you are with people outside your bubble. And still remember that the, the province has a maximum 10, unless you can well, I just think keep it at that and I want everyone to enjoy a safe and healthy Thanksgiving. And I would just really implore everyone to, to do what's best for everyone. No, there's no need to be selfish on Thanksgiving. We live in the best country in the world and we really need to, to be vigilant about this virus because as we can see, anyone can get it. So I'll just end with everyone have a great Thanksgiving and be safe and take care. I may as well just say too, that our next council meeting is scheduled for October 19th, 2020, following the Committee of the Whole. All right, we have a notice of motion that is requested by Counselor Sharp, resolve that council amend the procedural bylaw. And I acknowledge that this will be dealt with at the council meeting of October 19th.
Oh, point of order. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Isn't that to put a notice of motion on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just, he's just going to have a notice of motion at the next meeting?
Right.
Great, thank you.
So I'm going to have a motion at the next meeting. I have a notice of motion right now.
Point of order, you need to, again, suspend the rules to, to add that to, as a notice of motion for this meeting.
To the clerk, the mayor's already read it as a notice and he, the mayor just finished reading that it would be dealt with at the next meeting.
Well, I'll just get a.
He's, the mayor's already acknowledged it.
I'm just going to get a clarification from the clerk, because I'd like to do things right.
Yes, a notice of motion has been placed at this meeting, so it will be addressed at the next meeting of council on October 19th.
Great, thank you. Thank you, clerk, and thank you for clarifying that. I haven't yet memorized the procedural bylaw, so.
It's new, I understand. You're not, you're doing a good job, Jeff. Mayor, pardon, sorry.
Aiding, we need mover and seconder. Thank you, Counselor Sharp. We need a mover and seconder to move into closed session. Mover and seconder, Counselor Bane, Counselor Vardy. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Vardy, resolve that council meeting in closed session regarding the following. Under section 2392F, advice to the subject of solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that, that purpose and section 2392I, third-party information supplied in confidence to the municipality and AgroPower Incorporated. On favor, going into closed? All right, we now are into closed. Oh, yeah, thank you very much, John, for coming out and your evening can be over with us now. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Good night.
Good night. Mover and seconder for the closed session. Counselor Dunstall and Counselor Bane. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Bane, resolve that the closed session item in regards to AgroPower Incorporated be received. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the confirming bylaw. Counselor Bothwell, Counselor Sharp. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Sharp, resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number 20-78 inclusive and that be same be read a first time. On favor? That's carried. Mover and seconder for the second and third reading. Counselor Richie, Counselor Cadwell. Moved by Counselor Richie, second by Counselor Cadwell, resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number 20-78 inclusive, read a first time, now be read a second and third time and finally passed. And the mayor and town clerk do sign and seal the same and the rule of councils to the contrary notwithstanding. All in favor? That's carried. And meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.